Good evening. My name is Eric Lynch, and I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the Inland Wetland Commission Meeting for the Town of Monroe. Today is October 9th, and the time is 7:07 PM. Will everyone please stand to recite the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America, to your republic, for its citizens, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll take a roll call of the members of the commission and the staff present during tonight's hybrid meeting. Please answer here or present, starting with myself, Eric Lynch, Chairman, here. Ryan Kelly, Vice Chairman.
Here.
Rick Smith.
Here.
Jim Stewart.
Here.
Professional engineer. Benjamin Stavia, Secretary.
Here.
Paul Fernandez.
Here.
Mark Zemery.
Here.
Kathleen Gallagher, Planning and Zoning Administrator.
Here.
And Andrew Brodmann, Inland Wetlands Enforcement Officer.
Here.
Before we start, I'll read our mission statement and how the meeting will proceed. The Inland Wetland Mission Statement. The objective and purpose of the Inland Wetland Commission is to provide for the overall protection and preservation of the inland wetlands and watercourses within the town of Monroe. Tonight's meeting procedure. Please note that this meeting is being conducted utilizing electronic equipment in compliance with state law Public Act 21-1. As such, this meeting is being recorded and will be available to the public in compliance with state law. If you are attending remotely, please remember to mute your microphone unless speaking. Anyone participating remotely should take and state their name and title if applicable at the outset of each occasion that such person is speaking. All votes taken during which any member of this body or participating remotely shall be taken by roll call unless the vote is unanimous. The chat features will not be utilized nor considered during this meeting. In the normal course of our meetings, we will hear public hearings and other applications. The protocol for public hearings is to have an applicant make a presentation to the commission, during which and after which the commission will be asking the applicant questions. I ask the applicant to keep their presentations as concise as possible. The commission will then review town, staff, and other independent comments. The meeting will be open for a public comment. I will ask that all comments be made to the chair or commission. After any and all comments pro in opposition or of a general nature are made, the applicant will be given an opportunity to respond. Please keep comments or questions direct, or a time limit of three minutes may be imposed. It is not necessary that the applicant respond, but generally in their best interest to do so. There will be no further opportunity for new questions unless new materials entered in as evidence or testimony during the response. Please keep all comments pro and con specific to inland wetlands related matters. Other applications that do not involve public hearing will follow similar format, with the exception that there will be no public comments allowed. The meeting follows our published agenda unless otherwise amended. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No changes to the agenda.
Okay. So first thing we have, general public participation. Is there anybody in the chambers or online that would like to speak in a general nature here about something not in front of us this evening? Anyone? Anyone online? Okay, moving on. Uh, no regulated activities. All right, so moving on to our regular meetings and public hearing, okay. IWC 2024-4, file number 1480, 1536 and 1564 Monroe Turnpike. Proposal eight lot, semi-family residential development and a new road crossing a wetland adjacent to wetlands and watercourse. Jan's Land Development LLC, applicant from J. Edwards Associates LLC, representative. This is continued from our 9:25 meeting. Go ahead.
For the Director, Jason Edwards, Jan's Associate Interior Surveyor, 227 Stepford Road. So, um, as you know, we've been here for a few meetings now. Um, and we're just trying to hammer out some of the final, hopefully final details of our submission application. So just to clarify, I don't think we were 100% clear in the last meeting of what exactly we were doing with conservation easement and open space for the project. Um, what we're now proposing is kind of 18 acres of open space reserved. 13 of that, I believe, is going to be within this conservation easement, so the entire right side of the corner of the deck. Um, that's the north side of the property. It's going to be open space and then the conservation easement over the lower portion of the open space. So that's 56% of the properties that we preserved. Um, that's well in excess of the requirement in town. Uh, and I think against the third-party consultant set of the last hearing, that's a huge part of this application. Protecting a large amount of wetlands in the most sensitive area of property. After the last meeting, we received a summation from Dr. Clements, who's a third-party consultant. I just put a couple of paragraphs from that summation and just some responses here. He indicated that the record could be improved if either there was a letter stating from DOT or a letter from the applicant for the town engineer stating the fact that potentially that we needed a letter that the, that we weren't going to be allowed to access from 111, it's wrong, anywhere, but you know, where we are. That had been provided as part of the original application in the narrative we provided for the project. I put another copy down here if I was submitted. I just used it for this. And this is from page three. Uh, he made a point about, uh, you know, it wasn't just a four-sided box cover. Uh, his preference was to do the expand of the multiple three-sided box cover. Uh, makes the argument here that the, uh, the four-sided that we proposed is going to throttle the stream. That based on the design reports that we provided, it really isn't going to be a throttling of the stream here. It's just going to be continuing the stream that's through. Uh, we've provided a four-sided box cover with a low-flow channel down the middle between the baffles. You've got, just to put the specific behind it, you know, the inlet elevation here at this baffle entrance is 284.45, and then the top of the baffle is 285.5. So the water below 285.5 is going to only flow through the low-flow channel. So per our study that we submitted, uh, the two-year storm resulted in a peak elevation of 285.2. So that's a three-and-a-half-inch storm, basically, which is, you know, we only had one event bigger than that since 2022. So your really major storm events, you know, are the only ones that are going to go beyond that low-flow channel. And really, it's up until the 10-year storm that exceeds it, and that'll flow full width over the baffles. Um, and then the peak elevation, 100-year storm is 286.5, which is still below the top of the culvert. So I think that his statement that this box cover will throttle the stream means is not really accurate. So, uh, we were also asked at the last meeting to just provide as an option, an alternative, that included twin open bottom or three-sided culverts, which we did. There's an alternate sheet now. Now, what it actually resulted in, which I hadn't really considered until we started to look at it, is to do multiple three-sided culverts with the same open area that we need to pass the water results in a larger footprint because it has to get wider. There's walls in between there on the sides of the culvert, so you add another two feet essentially to the width of the whole culvert. Um, so we ended up, it's not a huge increase, but you end up with more disturbance area with the three-sided than you do with the, with the two-three-sided than you do with four-sided. So we did include it. Um, I think my client probably opened to doing that, but the town engineer, you know, has repeatedly stated over the public works that they will not accept that as a part of a town road design. For the double four-sided that we proposed. Um, one of the other requests and discussions we had with the last meeting, it's hard to see, uh, was to, um, provide, uh, information on what happens after the water, the stream enters the site. So this is, here is the, uh, this is the 40-inch pipe that passes underneath, um, Route 111. So our new culvert is going to be right here. This charges, flows overland into this culvert, comes out of this culvert, and then post-storm, uh, this is all just eroded channel really now. Uh, it's a huge sediment deposit up here, but this was a culvert at one point that collapsed, actually before that major storm that hit collapsed. Um, and it's just been an erosion channel really through here. Uh, I think Matt Pop is here, um, from my team, that he can speak to the, uh, the wetland quality that that provides. But then it, uh, it enters under, it enters into a head wall and a pipe here. And that's about 300 feet of collapsed channel that runs through there, or eroded channel. And then it goes into a pipe and it travels about 1,500 feet through this pipe, all the way out and discharges here, uh, back to the river, and then the river flows down to Lake Shore over here. So, uh, you've got about 2,000 feet, I guess, or a little less than that, of either eroded channel or piping that's going to be traveling directly out to the site before it's, you know, modified. One other thing I just wanted to mention, and I forgot to mention here. Um, part of our design now, we could add consideration to Dr. Clements and the commission's comments. Uh, this darker blue line, we added a dry pipe for, um, a pathway for wildlife to pass through. So it's a 15-inch pipe that would be above the water flow, so it would just be a tunnel essentially for the critters to get through. Uh, so that's what this blue line is, and that's on the plant as well.
So that was a 15-inch diameter? Was it a round pipe or?
15-inch round pipe. We would, I think the intent was to fill the bottom or let it just fill naturally with sediment, uh, but it would provide a dry path for tall meters or whatever they cross through.
What was the elevation difference between that and the main, just someone, or at what point will that eventually settle with water?
287, so about two-and-a-half feet above the bottom of that culvert, so you're not going to get much water in there. The intent is that it be dry, so. Major storm events, it may flow, but that would be down. You know, that's really the extent of what we, what I've changed in my plans. I think Matt Pop, you too. You're good. Just one picture before.
Yeah. Good evening. Matthew Pop, Advanced Architect, Professional Natural Scientist from Environmental Land Solutions. Uh, yeah, this is, uh, I'm going to just say it's a little difficult to see on the line, we need to notice. But the one thing. The study doing, designing crossings for contributing movement through the culvert. And the one I wanted to draw your attention to was this from right here, a second from the left. That's sort of what we're doing is, they'd say the best fit in the wetland or upland area for contribute movement, or they call it hotspots, is a three-by-six culvert. Um, and it should be, uh, have some straight or short, no less than six inches in the bottom of it. Um, so that's the one I wanted to draw your attention to. Um, the, the other one. Yeah, and this one's just for the, call it the prime culvert for the wildlife. It just says that the diameter isn't, uh, hardly really a matter, it is, but we're going to have a 15-inch diameter or 18-inch diameter pipe, it would be as half of a circle. Uh, the base of it would be lined with gravel. I have a detail to show you. It'd be lined with gravel and filled in with sand. So it's just noted that one, that front culvert lies adjacent to the box cover, but up slope from that. It's much easier to do the detail. So to have a detail kind of showing. So here's the box cover in the center. Uh, we would have a low-flow channel adjacent next with the baffles. Uh, that low-flow channel, again, when it doesn't rain much, the water will flow through there. So it's not a typical box cover, it was, you know, six feet wide and water spread out, um, you know, an inch thick over the entire base of it, but it's just a deeper spot. And then adjacent to it, there'd be just a secondary, or like a storm flow area. And then either side of it, like here and here, like a wildlife shelf that'd be out of the water, that wildlife can move through it. And one thing, and this detail doesn't really show, is this dry culvert would actually be up higher than this area here. And again, it's 15-inch diameter, half of a pipe. The base of it would be, uh, the gravel filled with sand. Uh, the road bankway is about beyond here. Uh, there is a little retaining wall that's shown, this, uh, that connects this head wall with the drying culvert. If there's any wildlife movement through here, the wildlife are, you know, crawling up between the pipes and crawling up over the road that they're going into the, the pipe. As, it's a real photo. Now, when we were out at the site, we did look off-site across the road to see if it would be water discharged. Um, there would be, there was a, probably an eight-inch lip. Wherever we are now, right here, water comes out of the pipe and it drops down about six to eight inches. Um, so there is a little lip there, and the channel beyond that is eroded. Um, so in my opinion, it didn't have a great attribute habitat, not like the site where we are, it's rocky. There's not sediment deposits in there. So I think that was important for Dr. Clements, who wants to know what was down, uh, the stream with us. So I would say that.
Do we have that photo? I'm sorry. Do we have that photo that I submitted, so everybody knows what he's talking about?
Uh, it should, yeah, it's in.
It's in one of the.
It's in the exhibits.
As long as it's in here.
It's in the exhibits, yeah.
What exhibit number it's in, so we can.
Exhibit 55. I think that's your site visit.
Yeah.
There you go. Matthews, um, did you measure the culvert? Is that 40 inches measured?
36 inches.
It's on the right.
Okay. And I, I took a picture as well. I used a scale.
I want everybody.
And I didn't see that it's 40. It was less than that, but it's not even 55, the second page.
55, yeah. We want to.
Just saying.
55.
Present facts unless you. You said 40. I'm just saying, if, when you, when I, I'm going to.
For the record, you know, my land surveyors were out there, they measured it at 40. That's.
Yeah.
Yes, we surveyed it, so.
Well, that's great.
This measured it possible.
Oh, that's great. I just want to make sure that we're.
So somewhere in our package is exhibit 55, which shows that picture of that culvert discharge.
It, the soil is up to, when water is coming out of the pipe. Something that's, you try to discourage.
Matt, are you saying that's on the?
The other, the other side.
The other side.
So this is, this is exiting.
It's off the side.
One of the webbers is over here and it's coming.
Our side is over here.
Understood.
So from that perspective, it's.
Got it.
The western side of the Monroe Turnpike.
Yep.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
You try to avoid the, the, the pipe discharges because that prevents wildlife movement through the pipe. About, you know, six inches, maybe a ton there, it can get up there, but again, it's discouraged, it is something like that. So again, just the point is downstream from the site, uh, I would say that wildlife, I mean, the watercourse partners have degraded, lots of erosion, fight, a lot of sediment. We also did look up at the farmer road, where we originally had posed the crossing, from crossing over there to water course, and that area also eroding a little bit too. It's not as steep, and that was our first proposal that we had, and we came back in with the alternative, moving out a culvert downslope to where it's less of what, direct wetland impact, steeper slopes. Um, when you're down, uh, down slope, the crossing, I think there's about 36 or 37 trees, 12 inches. I heard that would be removed. The other crossing is about 30. There's a few more trees that come out at this, uh, alternative crossing that we're proposing with the less impact of weapons. I think that was it. I think there was.
Did you address this? Did, uh, item 56, did you talk about this?
You just brought up the tree plant? You just brought up.
Do you have anything about that, Rick? Um, no, I just, um, just, it, it, it's, it's good because, um, it clearly delineates the size of the trees that are larger than 12 inches, so it's really important. But my question honestly was the, uh, the other information on here. This culvert is through tiles of crossroads, crossings, and it's very tiny writing, and I'm not sure what I'm supposed to get out of it.
The thing is that there's, uh, there's a few more trees, six to seven more trees would be removed at the lower crossing and using the farm road. It's about six to seven, you're a tree, see cuts.
Yeah, that makes sense because a farm road shouldn't have this many.
Yes.
Can I have some clarification? I apologize. So are you still proposing to have a baffled culvert?
Yes. Yeah, that would be the low-flow.
How does that wildlife shelf work with the baffled culvert? Does that shelf go above the height of the top of the baffle?
It's near the top of the baffle.
Okay.
On the top of the baffle, yes. The culvert height, it's approximately even to the top of the culvert.
But so, just so there, so it's at least at the height of the baffle or above so that there is one solid pathway going across the entire way? Okay, so, and I think, and this is just following up on Commissioner Smith's question is, um, and I believe it was Mike Chesnowsky supplied both the tree information as well as that follow-up information. I think the question was, is that follow-up information related to baffled culverts? Was there any additional information submitted related to the environmental value of a baffled culvert?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay.
Maybe if it's baffled or not, we still want a low-flow channel for the culvert.
There. Good question. Matthew, um, previously, so I appreciate what you're doing, and, and, and as Dr. Clements said, this culvert could work, but there's nothing in the record provided as such, such as case studies or reports where this system has been demonstrated to protect the in-stream biota. You, you, yeah, and this is great. I'm sorry I didn't get a chance to take a good look at it, but it, the message on the front is really clear, one side does not fit all. You know, not, not every culvert is, is appropriate for the wetland. It's, so that's why I was looking for you to, to, and I had suggested last time that you consult the construction guide from the Federal Highway Administration or the U.S. Fish and Wildlife also has culvert design guidelines for ecological function. So I'm just wondering, did you, I, I see that you did some good work, but I'm just wondering, is there any data that says that your design, it could work, but it's not exactly what you showed us, as Kathleen pointed out a little bit.
During the, our site visit, uh, Mr. Chesnowsky mentioned that he did find some reports and some real data that said, here's some information that shows that this system has worked, and here are some examples. And I was led to believe that we were going to see some of that information for that.
I did look at that. There was, you know, 37 smaller blurs designed for, a lot of it was for toes, not for salamanders. Almost all of those were for toes. Uh, and then you click down, you know, the link to get there, there's no further information, the link is gone. Uh, again, a lot of those, I would say 90% of them were for toes and frogs and not for salamanders. But the main thing was, I thought, you know, from Clements was, you know, was downstream of the site, there was anything even through there. And I would say, you know, below the, our site, there's the young one. No advocate for, uh, going in, finding salamanders. It's not, all the river, river channels are bad, they're bad for fish habitat, the sediment fills in the cracks in the rocks. And we, you know, you did ask for having a, you know, a secondary prime culvert that you proposed. Uh, and be to one side. I don't know, I don't think it's needed in this case, but that's what he was suggesting.
Right, that was, to me, was, you know, that's, that's what he suggested. I applaud that you added it. I think that's a great addition. I don't think it's, I don't think it does anything negative.
Yeah, yeah. Anybody else have any questions?
Um, yeah, just one, and that was, um, you know, and I'm going to, maybe we'll get to this, my, what I saw at the site visit, is that, uh, there are a lot of large mature trees, which you've documented today with numbers, which is great. It seemed like, and, and I was out there with you, it seemed like the original area where we were going through, uh, was about 10 feet eroded, you know, of the road, and it seemed like it was, you know, fairly well-contained, and there were fewer trees. So it seemed to me like that was a better area because although.
We can get to that part of the discussion. Like, that's, that's a conversation and discussion we should have.
Okay, great. Good.
Disagree with that. I wouldn't disagree with that.
Won't disagree.
No, no.
Okay, we'll wait, we'll, we'll, we'll cross that bridge and come to it.
Ah, yes.
Um, you, you mentioned that there was a alternative provided, uh, but is it in, is it in?
The original layout was usually the farm road.
Oh, no.
And then, and then the alternative was to move in this, uh, crossing down slope where there's, you know, about less than half the boundary.
I apologize. I specifically mean, um, I think there was a reference to the side-by-side culvert.
Uh, that's, there's.
Is that in?
It should be, um, I think it's sheet, uh, enough. S4.
A lot of exhibits this week.
S4. Or it should be the enlarging plan. There should be two of them. They may even both be S4.
S4 is a box, four-sided box cover, and, oh, uh, S5.
S5.
S5 is the twin three-sided.
And as I said, that, or disturbance that install. Uh, in the intent, just to be clear here, with the baffles, the baffles are there, it's a, to hold the bottom, the rock, you know, whatever sediment, it's to create that natural bottom in the culvert. So it's going to be, those will be over tops. The idea of the baffles is that they hold the material on the bottom, so that have a natural bottom. So really, your, your, your natural bottom culvert is going to be essentially the same as this in, in, once it's complete and once it's, you know, functioning, it should be the same, same end product as well, trying to make sure. When it provides the stability that you need to have a natural bottom is the baffles. They hold the stone in place, sediment in place.
Regarding that natural bottom, I know there was some discussion about River Rock, River Stone versus, um, versus some of the alternatives, and.
Sure, try to map the stone that has, the stone that's there. River Stone would probably wouldn't go all the way, but I think that the stone, um, pretty gigantic, I was. jagged, was there, is, some, I think, which is probably best, that if it's jagged, it kind of holds it in place. I know Dr. Clement's mostly kind of against, like, being jagged, but I think that's...
Yeah, I will attest, just from, from my site visit, I, the, the stone in, in the waterway was much more jagged than I anticipated based on that suggestion.
Good question.
Yes. Not last meeting, because I wasn't here, but just for the record, I did, did watch the tape. I asked about the culvert openness ratio.
That's, we provided in two submissions ago in part of the area report, it was in there.
And what did you, what did you find?
I pulled it up, I know.
So my calculation shows that you're, you're, you're half of what it's recommended.
Your report, I think it's point two-five, is that right?
Yeah.
We're above that.
Yeah, you're, but you're above that when you calculate it using feet, but that point two-five is supposedly used by meters, and then that calculates, according to my calculation, point one-three. Point eight if you use feet. So I would recommend you look at that. Also, using the Connecticut, what is it? The Stream Crossing Guidelines, DEP Stream Crossing Guidelines. They're basically saying that any steeper grade than over three percent, you should be using a bottomless culvert. I, I mean, it's about ten percent, ten, eleven percent is what I recall. Everything I understand is you should be using the existing material in the stream to recreate the, the bottom of the culvert. And at ten percent, eleven percent, I have my real doubts that there's gonna be anything left in that stream after a big, after a big storm. So that's, that's my, my thought, and unless, you know, it's be that the material's gonna stay there, especially after our recent storms, and it won't take a lot of water, that, that water is, is gonna go through at a crazy speed, to eleven percent. And, and, you know, unless it's, as, as you say, unless it's all jagged rock packed in there, I have my doubts. Now, now, could you do a natural stream bottom by burying that culvert a couple feet?
That's what we're doing.
Yeah. I mean, maybe, but, yeah, but right now, you're at one foot down?
We're at now already eighteen inches.
Eighteen inches?
Down, actually, no.
Also, you have the baffles holding.
Yeah, the baffles extended up.
And what is the, what's the natural stream bed material if you were to use that?
It's, it's mostly, it's rocks, yeah.
Probably, you know, eight inches, twelve inches in size.
Football basketball size.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's big rocks, riprap in there.
A little bit of asphalt in there, too.
And how you, how do you plan on getting it in there, when you got a forty-eight inch, you know, forty-eight foot culvert that's, is it three feet on top of the, of the stream bed? Three and a half feet at the top of the stream bed, or is it three and a half feet overall?
It's, I think it's, it's three and a half feet, or four feet overall, I think.
So you're picking eighteen inches out of that?
No. Let me just, you're right before I answer. We changed this a few times, that's why I'm not...
Understood.
Answer your first question, a summer intern, that's who's gonna get the rock in.
Yeah, exactly.
If I'm not mistaken, I think they bring that in pieces, so they, they put in the bottom in, and then they put a top on it. So if you place it in, it's at the top. I think you probably speak better. You did mention that they, it does have a top.
Drawing yourself back, if you could get the feet.
Yeah, through the open space, from the, the baffle.
Yeah, so your openness ratio is gonna be, is gonna be, you know, very, very small. So I would, you know, that's supposed to provide light in the, in that, in that pipe.
I'll look at our...
I would suggest you, you take a look at those guidelines and, and, and see where, where they fail.
How difficult would it be to increase the height of that, leaving the bottom where it is, but going up another foot?
I mean, if we had to, we can do it.
Just to allow for the couch, what we think is necessary, than, than any, any of those big storms, if you don't have any issues. How much, and then, how much height do you have from the current top of the culvert to the road base? I mean, I think, I assume there's plenty of room, that if you did raise it up, you, you had room to...
That's what I just have to check, I'm not certain if, if we have to adjust the grade of the road or not, depending on how much cover we need over that structure.
Right. I don't know if that's something you can quickly...
If I can look at it, no. We have, we've got plenty of room to lift it up if we wanted to, so we could come up with, with higher culvert if that's what, you know.
And then the, the other question, you talked about the water quality volume. I did see that you, you modified one basin, did you, all the basins now are gonna hold the water quality volume?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Okay, thank you.
Any questions? Just observing.
Actually, I have a question that you can put, I got answered, the distance to the top of the, the road.
Okay.
So what, did we determine it's two feet or, not open space, or we...
Apparently, it sounds like it's about two feet, so it's about eighteen inches or so low grade, and then two feet of open space, and then...
So I, I wonder what James could comment, with regard to the maintenance, because he said that that was a factor, and I'm wondering if two feet is a problem.
He's on Zoom.
Yeah, we can, we can ask him to chime in. All right. Do you guys have anything else? Do you have any other questions? Maybe now's a good time to bring James in and hear what he has to say.
Yep. No, I don't have any objections with it getting taller, in terms of the maintenance. I mean, all, all it's gonna do is make the, the cost to replace in the future more, but there's no objections to doing that.
Do you have any concerns with it at its current size? Is it harder to maintain with it being smaller?
No. No, e-essentially, it's, it's gonna be about the same. There's not gonna be much difference in the way of maintenance.
Okay. Any other comments based on anything else you heard so far tonight? Or anything else you wanna contribute?
Uh, no, nothing specific. I think that, you know, the commission members are summing up their, their ideas well, I think the applicant's responding. I don't have too much else in the way of major comments. I could just let you all know, I have, I have three outstanding comments from my comment letter, most recent one. And one of them has already been addressed to me so far, they provided the additional information, so I know it'll work. The second thing is just the detention basin at the entrance. Just this, as you're coming into the property, on the left-hand side, closest to the wetlands, we need to just make some, a little bit of tweaks in terms of the elevations, I believe. Sorry, Jason, I, I didn't see if you responded to my email this afternoon, but that's pretty much where, where that stands, so there might be a little tweaking to that basin, but that's, that's about it.
Did you see his email about that? Do you wanna comment on it?
Nick sent a response to you, but I delayed those, so I'm sure you didn't see it, but we're comfortable that we can make those adjustments without any change to the, the impact.
How much of a change is it, like, what?
The portion of the bottom off a foot, and that's about it, yeah.
Okay.
Same area, same volume, everything, so, but it's, it's important to make sure we get it right.
Okay.
Yeah, th- that was essentially my concern, too. The bottom just needed to come up. I think, I think I had it measured, like, at least another eight inches. So if they come up a foot, that's good, I just didn't know what that did to their footprint of their basin within their calculations, but that's something, as long as they don't create significantly more of a footprint, I think in terms of, like, wetlands disturbances, I'm, I'm pretty comfortable.
Okay. Any questions?
James, what particularly is, is your issue and Public Works' issue with a, a properly-designed three-sided culvert with, with footings that are buried deep enough so that you don't have to worry about scour?
The, the problem is, is every, every issue that we've had with culverts is always a three-sided, and it has to do with scour. We've never had an issue with any four-sided. It's literally every three-sided, or every issue is a three-sided one.
So it's, they scour out underneath the footings?
Yeah, and, and, and that's the problem, because even if, even if you go down, you know, three feet on these footings, you, you know, we all know how these, especially after a big storm, like we just had, think about all the brooks and channels and everything, you know, just all around towns. All of that, all of those channels are now deeper than they once were. So after time and time and time of these storms, eventually that bottom is going to get deeper, and, and eventually it will find those footings, and that's just what, what we don't wanna have to essentially deal with. Because that, once it gets undermined, it becomes a very critical situation where we need to replace very quickly in or, in order to provide access to these residents, because especially on a development like this, there's one way in, one way out.
Okay, thank you.
Could you elaborate a little bit, James, as far as maintenance? I, I, I'm stuck on my experience with culverts with regard to heavy storms, specifically in Tucson, Arizona, where they have free, free box culverts all over the place, and they don't seem to have a problem with scour, even though when the monsoons hit, it's not a light rain or drizzle, it's a, it's a torrent, and it's a, it's a tsunami of water coming through. So I, I just, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm just asking for further clarification on, on maintenance, and, and can you give us an idea of how much more maintenance are we talking? Is it, you know, a significant amount? Is it degradation of ten percent? Ten percent more maintenance? I, I, I just, I don't know. Ask if there's some clarification, please.
Yep, so it, it's hard to quantify in the way that you're looking for, just due to the fact that, you know, all throughout town, there's multiple culverts, multiple crossings that the town has to maintain throughout the year, and, and we don't have staff that is able to consistently monitor every crossing, every, you know, especially after every storm. So it comes in, a lot of the times, we're, we're chasing fires, I hate to put it like that. But, you know, and once it gets to that point, it's no longer just preventative maintenance anymore. It's, it's a full rehab. Hopefully, we can catch it before then. But, but the issue, you know, i- in the real world, i- if, if things were properly maintained, properly inspected, every time there was washouts, it was, you know, reestablished after every storm, then, then yes, three-sided would not be a problem for DPW. But, you know, we, we have enough issues with the inventory we have and just roads in general, to where we just, you know, the four-sided, we tend, we haven't seen any issues. No, nobody on staff has had an issue with any four-sided that's gone in, period, that they've seen in their, their professional careers. I haven't seen them, but I've had, even in my career, I've had, personally, I've had three three-sided box culverts that have been undermined, that, that weren't even twenty years old, thirty years old tops. So it, it just leads to a lot of hesitation on installing new ones that the town is gonna have to accept.
I, I hear what you're saying, but, and these culverts have had failures, they were well-engineered?
They, they were constructed in the nineties, so unfortunately, there's, I may not always have good data in terms of how it was constructed, design standards have changed, I may not even have the records of how deep the footings originally were when they went in, unfortunately. So it, it's not, you know, as, as the years go on, we're getting more and more information on how to more adequately design things such as these. You know, how these were designed twenty years ago is not how they're designed today. Nobody would accept anything from twenty years ago. You know, design standards, storms, everything is, is completely different. So it, it's one of those where it may have been, at one point, it may have met all the regulations, codes, design standards, everything at that point. I'd like to think it did.
Hey, Jim, I have a, a question, maybe a two-part question, this is Mark. So I'm wondering if there's any data on the structural integrity of the three-sided culvert versus the four-sided culvert? And which one is more structural, structural, you know, better structurally? And then the second part is, what's the structural integrity of the road above the culvert with a three-sided versus the four-sided? To me, it sounds like from what you're saying, if there's damage to the three-sided culvert, it could potentially impact the roadside above it, is that a correct assessment?
My, my, from my stance, is when, when things are constructed and, and installed properly, there is no real calculable difference between the four-sided and three-sided in terms of structural strength. My issue comes into when there, when it starts to fail, and what those failure points actually look like. So for instance, if a section of a three-sided box on one side, let's say an eight-foot section, starts to undermine, now there's no material underneath it, that's gonna react completely differently than a four-sided will. And that's, that's kind of the issue, it, it's, it's not the standard strength, it's, it's when it starts to fail, and then, you know, how, how to remedy it.
Yeah, understandable, so I think what you're getting at is it's more the durability and the maintainability as well, that's what you're saying. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I, I have no objection to a three-sided box culvert going in underneath a road. I just have an issue with the town accepting a three-sided box culvert, if that makes any sense.
But I, I see, I see Commissioner Smith's face, so I'm just gonna expand upon this one thing. If it was, if it was a private road, James?
Yep.
My understanding is you would not have an issue with a three-sided culvert?
Correct.
Correct. So the, the determining factor is exactly what was just said, the durability and the maintenance of the three-sided versus the four-sided.
Real?
What, what, James, did you, have you reviewed the calculations presented by the applicant with regard to the amount of, amount of impact it has? You had, you had, you had, you compared nine hundred versus seven hundred with, you know, you, you were comparing some figures as far as the amount of impact, square footage of, of impact. I, and that goes back to my question with Matthew that we'll talk about later, but it just seems like there was less impact with the one, and I'm just, I don't know how you got to a third of that on the, on the alternative down below.
You asking me or James?
I'm asking, I, I guess, James, did you, did you, do you know how it's done? I'm not familiar with that calculation.
I'm not sure what you're asking, maybe you can clarify, because I, are you locked in there?
So there was, there was, there was a, a note with regard to, that the, the first crossing that you proposed had two hundred, two thousand forty-five cubic yards of cut, six hundred fifty yards of fill, was projected to cause a wetlands disturbance of approximately thirty-eight hundred square feet. And then with the second one, lower below, you had more of a, it was about a third of that amount, thirty-eight hundred square feet. I'm just, I, I don't know, I, I just, it didn't, it didn't compute with me when I saw the, when we were out there, and Matthew had some agreement.
I, Jason Edwards, for the record, I can try and answer that. What I just put up on the screen here, and this is the, the submittal from July, I believe, where we, before we, before we relocated the road, so this was the initial wetlands crossing, and, and the main difference is that we're crossing, that, that road crossing is at a much wider section of, of wetlands. So shaded area is the wetlands limits, so your disturbance area is just greater because the, the, the wetlands corridor is wider, versus when we come down here, I'll show you it side-by-side if I can.
Can I ask the commissioners again, when you...
Can I ask the uh commissioners again, when you uh speak to state your name, only as we're recording it, so we know who it is that's speaking?
Good suggestion.
This is the same sheet of. So this is the relocated road, which is farther down the stream corridor, and it's a much narrower section of the wetlands there. So the square footage, obviously, is gonna be just less simply because the wetlands are narrower. This is the original, which has the big wide area of wetlands here versus you know, this is the revised, which which is farther downhill. The original crossing is up here, uh, you know, farther up the hill, you know, wider section. So your square footage is significantly different.
And the culverts, uh, the two different cul- culverts have different widths, then?
They may be slightly different, but they're close. Widths meaning uh like side-to-side width or length of the road? Side-to-side, no, they're the same width. You know, we may have actually widened since that original, um but the wetlands impact doesn't change a whole lot, because we're really at the border of that wetland corridor with our, you know, we're with this layout, that entire wetlands path there is getting impacted. So regardless of the width of the culvert, it's still gonna be the same disturbance area. Versus if you're upstream, that fluctuation is because of the width of the wetland corridor itself is varied more. So um, so here, we're up in the wider section, so all of this, where the road is being filled, that whole area is all getting disturbed.
Uh, I saw it's more than nine hundred sixty-five square feet. I I I I just, the the lower one, there was a lot more wet areas uh versus the ten-foot place in the road that had been eroded.
Well, it's more than just that. Remember, if wetland soil is beyond that channel, that's that's where it's like, because you've got wetland that extends, flatter area, the wetlands probably extend farther out from the stream banks there. Uh, yeah, I'm not so certain, but that's what it appears to be. Uh, versus where you get to a a more defined channel, the wetland soils are really right at the edge of that channel.
So you you're hitting on ahead. It's the stream banks, where it was just such a wide area of uh wet uh rocks and moss and what have you, that just didn't make, didn't make sense to me. Nine sixty-five versus three thousand.
Yeah, I can speak to what, you know, we have.
I I just think so. I I just, I don't know how those calculations happen. I I, it doesn't, it doesn't compute.
But I mean, if you look at the area gray, that's inside the footprint of our work area, right? So that's the area there versus the other sheets. You know, you've only got this small rectangle of wetlands that were actually disturbing.
You have, he has a better grip on it than I do, but I
I'm I'm just struggling with where you're going. Like, if the math seems to make sense in my head.
And I know what I'm saying, what I saw is not what's on the map. It was not just a little narrow, little streamlet, it was a wide wet area.
Which area are we talking?
The lower area where 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 this is right now. It was a wide wet area. Matthew?
We're we're showing it here down lower. It's pretty, it was narrow, that one compared to up on top, where it's it's fairly wide. So this and down below, you know, I'm trying to jump across, but up on top.
I don't mean to be, but I'm the only one who thinks that. I I I just, what I observed is a lot of wetness down below versus when you and I were standing, looking across the road, like, wow, this is only, you know, this seems
Oh, but the weather goes beyond that.
I understand that, but I guess it was the upper areas of the stream.
Yes, so just, I think we're talking about when the old farm road is. It looks very narrow there, but also the road is twenty feet wide and there's banks, so it extends further up slope. And up slope is really a lot, what, why does that?
If you stand by your calculations, that's fine. It didn't, it it just didn't make sense to what I saw. What I saw was not reflected in numbers, and I'm not used to that.
All right, so I just want to make sure I understand. So are you saying the upper section, where the original road, the farm road, is smaller than you thought it was, or is it the lower section is bigger than you think it is? I I'm just trying to understand where, what calculation you saw that doesn't jive with it. Because I, what I saw looks, makes sense on the map. So I just want to make sure I understand what you're not sure of.
What I said to Matthew was, where we were standing at the upper road, it seemed like just a ten-foot gap of eroded, you know, it was a condensed place where the stream had been throttled.
Maybe down below. But beyond that is the wetlands, you know, wetlands, wet, beyond that.
I I I just want, so you, you think the up, the farm road wetlands is narrower than what they're representing?
No, they might be, it might be true that what they're, what I'm saying, the lower
You're not sure, because you were there, and you you're
So compared to the upper area, the original, the lower area seemed to me like there was a lot more wet rock area moss. And I know that wet rock is not necessarily imperative.
So so you think to based on the map and what you see, you're thinking the currently proposed area, this, what we're calling a smaller impact area, is bigger than what you think it is, because you saw it. Is that
I think, I'm at, I think where up where the farm road is, that the width of the water course, not the weather, the width of the water course is probably a little bit smaller than the width of the water course down uh downstream. But the wetland extends beyond that range.
I'm 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 willing to leave it alone. I'm just, I'm just saying that what I saw looked like it was gonna be more intrusive in the in the wetlands.
So I just want to make sure I understood what what you're not understanding. Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
I have some housekeeping items, once the commission is back.
Are we done with the applicant?
Before, well, because we need, yeah, public here, the housekeeping related to this.
Yes, and before we start with the public, I'd just like to read the exhibits and the record and things of that.
Okay. A- a- actually, I'm sorry.
Please.
As you said, I have a question for James DeMayo. Um, maybe you you don't have this uh in- information, but has there been a time within the last ten years where a three-sided culvert has gone in in a s- a similar situation?
I don't think the town has accepted any three-sided culverts in in the past fifteen years. Um, I I believe, uh, because I believe, uh, one of the commissioners, or one of you asked this in the last meeting. And I had to pick the brain of the director, who's been with the town for, I think, like sixteen years now, seventeen years. Um, so I figured he would know if anybody, the director of public works. And he he could not think of one that was, one three-sided that was put in, multiple four-sided, but no, no three-sided.
Okay, okay, thank you.
That that the town accepted. I do have that one caveat, that the town accepted. I I do think that there may have been one or two three-sided that has gone in, but it's gone on in on private property, not a town accepted or a town road.
Okay.
I'd like to read the exhibits into the record. Uh, since our last meeting on September twenty-fifth, uh, there were engineering comments by the town engineer, James DeMayo, document dated nine twenty-four, twenty twenty-four. Uh, a time extension request letter from Attorney Russo for the applicant dated September twenty-six, twenty twenty-four. Uh, a summation letter by Dr. Michael Clemmons, uh, dated September twenty-six, twenty twenty-four. Um, I know the the commission has already reviewed this, but just to bring that to your attention, uh, Dr. Clemmons' uh contract has ended. Uh, because of that, he created a summation letter for the commission of his outstanding items. Um, and said he felt like he did a thorough review and that the commission understood um the potential impacts that should be reviewed um as the application concluded itself. Um, a letter from neighbor Mark Lamont dated September thirty of twenty twenty-four. A letter from neighbor Mark Lamont, uh, dated September thirty of twenty twenty-four. Uh, site visit notes from Chairman Lindstrom dated October second, twenty twenty-four. Uh, tree clearing report by Jan's Land Development dated October seventh, twenty twenty-four. A response to engineering comments by J. Edwards Associates dated October seventh, twenty twenty-four. Wildlife study and contextual box culvert, um submission by Matt Pop dated October eighth, twenty twenty-four. Engineering comments um by town engineer DeMayo dated October eighth, twenty twenty-four. Letter and articles from neighbor Michelle uh Saltziak, apologies for my pronunciation of that, dated ten eight, twenty twenty-four. And we got uh three of those back-to-back emails. Um, the second one included pictures. Uh, the third one was another letter that also included pictures. Um, and they've all been entered into the record. Uh, it also looks like there might have been a fourth one that had additional articles. Um, that was also submitted. Um, letters and legal case studies by Paula Jelly dated, uh, received uh, October ninth, twenty twenty-four. And I believe that is it. This commission, um, some of these emails contained email subjects, links within the emails, and then attachment to the emails. Um, because sometimes the email was linking to a website, not necessarily a document to download. If there was an actual attachment and document, we printed it out and made sure that it was included um in everything you guys have tonight. However, we also forward you many of these via email, so that you had access to all the links and the things of that nature. If you did not have a chance, or you didn't check your email, because some of these did come in today, um, please, uh, take a look at your emails, so that you have access to all the links and can review it prior to deliberations. Um, just as an overall timeline, um, obviously, this public hearing has gone longer than the statutory uh limits of thirty-five days. What that means is we can use an additional sixty-five days throughout any point of the process. Uh, with the granting of that from the applicant, the applicant has continued to grant us up to that point. Um, we will hit that sixty-five days uh soon, which means the public hearing has to either be closed tonight. Um, or if the applicant grants us another extension, it has to be closed by the next meeting. At that point, we have thirty-five days in order to deliberate. Because of the Thanksgiving holiday in November, which I can't believe we're already talking about the holidays, we only have one meeting in November, so a decision has to be made at the very, very latest at the November meeting. So as you guys think about what you want from the applicant, or where you are in this thought process, please note that the public hearing has to be closed either tonight or at the next meeting, and a determination and action has to be voted on at the November meeting very much. See you there again.
All right, can we move on to public comments? Okay, uh, at this time, we'd like to invite the public to come up. Anybody in the chamber who would like to speak in favor or opposition, or in a general nature, please step up to the microphone, state your name and address, and there is also a sign-in sheet, if you wouldn't mind signing your name as well. Please come on up.
My name's Brian Thera, Fox Sunrise Terrace. Uh, I just wanted to verify a few things that I I read in the IWC regs. Um, clearcutting of timber in a wetland area is not permitted unless it's for the expansion of agricultural crop land. Is that true? Okay.
You need a permit to do it.
Right.
Yeah.
Not as of right at that point, so.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, so just a quick clarification. Unfortunately, the inland wetland regulations have a ton of nuances to it. Um, we have actually, we've had some other issues with agricultural work being done, so we've actually been in contact with DEEP recently about it. But yes, it has to do with, there's two different types of permits. There's an inland wetland permit, which is what this application is front of the commission for. And there's an as-of-right um for permitted uses, that agriculture falls into that category. That is where it kind of gets into, there's a portion of the code, but that's where it kind of gets into timber and things like that as a permitted use as of right. Which this commission does make that determination, but they're two different permits. So as it relates to this, no, you cannot, it's not a permitted use as of right to take down timber in a wetlands unless you get a permit by the inland wetland commission.
Okay, and then roads can start from an direction of buildings, uh, not allowed in a wetland area unless it's directly related to farming operations.
Again, it's the same nuance, unless it receives a permit from the inland wetland commission.
Uh, because some of the things I read, uh, basically the purpose of the regs to protect the citizens of the state by making provisions for the protection, preservation, maintenance, and use of the inland wetlands and watercourses by minimizing their disturbance and pollution, maintaining and improving water quality, preventing damage from erosion, uh, turbidity and siltation, preventing loss of fish and other beneficial aquatic organisms, uh, wildlife and vegetation, and the destruction of the natural habitats thereof. Uh, deter- deterring the, deterring and inhibiting the danger of flood and pollution and protecting the quality of the wetlands and watercourses, uh, protecting the state's potable fresh water supplies from the dangers of drought, overdraft, pollution, misuse, and mismanagement. Basically, the the protections, or it mentions that the protections, uh, sorry, it mentions the protection of a native species is critical and all proposed activities should aim to ensure their preservation and compliance with the applicable laws and regulations. Um, it seems clear to me that the applicant's uh not concerned with the protection of a native species like the threatened dusky salamander, uh, is an important indicator of healthy streams, springs, and seeps. Uh, conserving this species relies heavily upon protecting its habitat and perfect, uh, preventing encroachment. Uh, this development would uh do the exact opposite of that, uh, of protecting the dusky salamanders habitat and preventing encroachment. Um, according to the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection website, uh, the the population decline of these salamanders is a result of large increases in the building of impervious surfaces such as roads, roofs, parking lots, patios, uh, which increase rapid runoff of stormwater and increased flood frequency. And uh as everybody can attest, uh, that last flood, if that's any indication of what flooding would be like right now. Um, after this development, it would make it much worse. I mean, our house flooded and we're on the top of a hill. There, this would be at the bottom of a hill, where it would just be decimated. The developer had mentioned in the last meeting that he searched for uh, on the internet and found this culvert with ballast that act like a fish ladder. I'm no expert, but uh, there aren't fish there, according to uh Dr. Clemmons, he had mentioned that. Um, it doesn't seem like they're concerned with the the ecosystem. Uh, and that, according to Dr. Clemmons, their proposal will have a significant impact on the wetlands. Um, last couple of points. Uh, basically, Dr. Clemmons had said that the three-sided would be the only way to not significantly impact the ecosystem in a negative way. And the town engineer would not build a three-sided culvert. So, I mean, where does that leave this? To me, it seems like it, you know, can't really work. Um, it would uh significantly impact wildlife, clearcutting of the trees to make room for all the roads and the uh the all the blondes that would be there. Uh, and also the erosion, pollution impacting of the drinking water uh from all of us in the whole area. Um, and make it even more susceptible to flooding. Uh, and lastly, I'm almost done. Um, lots, one, seven, and eight look like they're right up on the wetlands, and like half their whole property would be still wetland, so I don't know how that could possibly work. Um, basically, overall, I just want to put it on record that I'm opposed to this project. Uh, and to please decline this application. Thank you.
Excuse me, sir. Can you repeat your name again?
My name is Brian Thera. Fox Sunrise Terrace.
And you put in a letter to us? Did you put in a letter to us?
Uh, I didn't. Well, we, my wife and I put in a letter on a previous meeting. Yeah.
Just just a point, I I do want to thank the public for all the letters. There was, there's a lot of, a lot of information for us to go through.
Thank you. Anybody else in chambers who'd like to come up and speak? Please state your name and address for the record. Please state your name and address for the record and use the sign in sheet as well. I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Michelle Saltaziac, two thirty seven Cottage Street.
Daughter Cassandra's here.
Yes, she is.
So I recognize that letter.
Yes.
Why don't you step up, please?
For that education.
Well, I think we'll have at least one question.
What? There's somebody else speaking, wait.
So, I sent most of this to you guys just for everybody else on the coast, obviously, as well. The one thing I couldn't send you was a Vermont study specifically on the little salamanders like the spotted. Cass included a picture of one that we found on our property. We've owned them there since two thousand and eighteen. They do travel underground. What I submitted to you guys, some of the documents, was that the impact you have on surface areas, because they cannot dig their own tunnels to travel, they actually rely on that of small terrestrial creatures like moles and ice and rats. So I have a concern with those disturbances, the fact that we're potentially disturbing even more of those properties based on the figures they initially gave with doing dull culvert, look like another two hundred and thirty five square feet was being disturbed, was the words used earlier. That concerns me, we have that pulse stretch on both sides, but not only the water itself that I see on the map, but all the wetlands next to it. The other is that it does give reference in the documents I sent you on how far these salamanders travel. So spotted salamanders, on average, can travel up to a hundred and seventy five meters from their water source. The females travel further than males, some of them will travel as far as four hundred and five meters for the rest of us. They're still traveling over a hundred and ninety one meters. We're not leaving the amount that is really needed by them. And even Connecticut's DEP site says on average, they prescribe a minimum of fifty to a hundred foot wide buffer around these pools, which I don't see on there. We're disrupting so much of their environment. We also, I was so focused on amphibians last time because it's a wetlands issue. I've got videos of red fox, we've had skunk, we've had possums, we've had bear come through the back. But there's a lot of small animals that I've seen cross between my neighbor's streets, the gentleman that was here before me, and Paula Jelli, who's to the right of this proposed area. Currently, the way that it is, those animals can go back and forth between our side, further down Cottage, as well as the first house. They know from my area to hers. With this proposal, they cannot. Those other animals, this is probably their water source too. Most of us in my neighborhood do not have water sources on our properties. It's a very slope there, we don't have it. I'm concerned where these other animals are supposed to go while we've got dogs, cats, and humans that are now creating barriers to them safely reaching this space. So, I'm leaving it at that, it's not going to last, but to consider. And really, if somebody looks at it, I feel, I've been here since nineteen eighty seven, and I think the thing that has me most concerned is I feel like we, we feel like we're obligated to find a way to make this work. And I don't think we're looking at the right things to make it work for. We're worried about least impact, least impact, but in the long run, impact to them really isn't fair. And I just wonder whether to consider that.
Thank you. Anybody else in the chambers who'd like to speak? Please state your name and address for the record.
Cassie Miller, two seven, two thirty seven Cottage Street. So, a lot of what she said is going to be for mine, so spotted salamander that we found on my property, yes. But they think, I don't know where there's any other wetlands really in this area that it's just come from. I mean, we're not that far off from Paula. Unless they're going down to like drain tracks, we don't know the places it comes from is really up in there. So even though, because I was looking at, I think Clemens, who I believe biologist is, he found, you know, the wood frog, the duskeys, which is another of my concerns, and green frogs. He didn't find any spotted, but I don't know where else it could come from, so even if there's not a ton, I think those are probably up there. And so one of these studies I was looking at, it was spotted salamanders, and it was for road salt specifically. I am concerned about the road, obviously the culvert, but the road really, I know that in one of the documents it said that there was supposed to be some sort of catch that was supposed to prevent any, like, you know, contamination from whatever's on the road, including road salt. But as well was discussed already, it's the town, I guess, that's going to be maintaining this. That can be confirmed, which is, I think, what it was. We've kind of seen how badly all of our roads are maintained. I really don't see that it's going to be maintained properly, so if it has a small amount of rain salt, if I could find where it happened here. Yeah, so effects of suburbanizing landscapes on reproductive effort of rhenal pool breeding amphibians. It's citing the spotted salamander and the blue spotted salamander, and it shows that their reproductive efforts were negatively affected by increasing tree cover within one hundred meters of water, which obviously there's going to be a lot of clearcutting, I assume, for eight different lots in the road. So that will already be an issue. And then impervious cover within one hundred meters of the road, which the road, which I don't know enough about the road to really comment too much on that one. But, and then road salt contamination, so even a tiny bit of road salt negatively affects the spotted salamander, and I assume other types of salamanders in their breeding. And I'm concerned that we're not really going to be keeping road salt or any other contaminations out of that waterway. So I don't know what kind of guarantee there is that we're not going to be polluting the water. And then another of my concerns is, somebody else mentioned lots seven and eight. They're right up against the water, lot seven even needs to meet the water. If you've driven around town, you've seen those little stick, like those little yellow stickers that everybody puts on their lawn. Everybody chews their lawns with chemicals, everybody uses pesticides. I don't know how anybody is really going to be guaranteeing that the people who end up living in these places aren't going to be polluting the water, especially when on their property lines it's the water. And then lot eight, I don't think it includes the water correctly, but it's right up against it. So I'm concerned about that, and obviously the salamanders, they're very sensitive to that kind of thing. So not only the road salt, but you know, any kinds of pesticides for a salamander. I'm concerned about that because nobody's going, even if you tell them, nothing, and tell people you can't use pesticides or pesticides on your lawn. People are going to do it, it's going to get into the water. So even if the whole rest of this goes through, at least lot seven and eight, considering they're right up against for the water, I don't think those things at least should be included, at least if those were too far away. The rest of the lots, they don't have the water right there. It's still going to be, you know, bad for the environment if people are using harmful chemicals, but at least it's not going directly into the water, as what it would be with lot seven and eight. And then I'm also concerned with just the genetic diversity of the species. So, I don't know whether it's the map, but you guys all know what it looks like. So, you know, there's like Paula Jelli's house, which she's from, different frogs there, I don't know if she's from salamanders. But, and then there is that lot next to it where there's no houses, but it's all wooded. I assume that's other salamanders, you know, there's mice, there's the raccoons that live there, all the different species. And then there are the wetlands. By putting all of these houses, we're just going to be completely locking off anything that's living on Paula Jelli's side. They're not going to be able to make it to the actual wetlands anymore, which I was looking at one study. Or, let's see, this, there is a lot of, I'm naming it. It was on eastern spreadback salamanders. I don't have that one here, but it's second eastern spreadback salamanders, and it shows that they've only moved up to at max fifty five meters or one hundred and eighty feet. And that's as far as they dispersed across like lawns, so pastures, so. If these plots, when, when and having her plots are a lot bigger, especially one hundred and eighty feet, that they're able to travel them. So whatever populations are on one side of the property, one side of all of these developments, they're completely cut off from the other side, and their genetic diversity is going to suffer, which this study, you guys can look at later, I like doing my email. And so it's studying the difference between salamander populations in fragmented habitat, which is what this would become, and continuous habitat, which is what it currently is. And so the continuous habitat, they had significantly higher genetic diversity than the species, well, than the populations in fragmented habitat, because they can have a degree and a dispersal was also higher. So I'm concerned about that, you know, even the species that are going to be left behind to be into its holes that survive. Either just, they're going to be inbreeding more, which is another study was looking at. And let me see, and then more about the duskeys specifically. One of the studies, it was about stream salamanders, which is the northern dusky and a mean head salamander. So, it was saying about how, so removing the trees for salt is going to be, well, I can actually make clarification, how much clearcuttings they're going to be, especially on lots seven and eight. I don't know if anybody has a, your answer.
We can't answer that, that's, that's up to the applicant to answer, and they can address.
Okay. Uh, so, I'd like to know about that if there's a future leading. But, so, logging and everything, it obviously, where's the water going to go? It increases runoff. And so the dusky salamanders, which that study was talking about, they do not do well with the increased runoff. So I am also concerned about that, especially because in the map by Clemens, where he found all of his species, one of the duskeys that he found was in that little pool of water that's within the property lines of lot seven. So if we're removing a whole bunch of that vegetation and all the trees, then I'm concerned about them and what more runoff is going to be from all of these ones into that area. So really, that's one of my big concerns, is just lot seven and eight. I think as a whole, we really shouldn't allow this, but if anything, at least not lot seven and eight. And I probably have one, but I think that would be it for now.
You submitted an email with some, some photographs?
Uh, yes.
Can, can you elaborate on, on what these are? Like, I, I see them, and I'm just, I, I don't know anything about what I'm looking at.
Uh, the only picture that I submitted was the spotted salamander.
A picture of one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine pictures.
Yeah, I only get spotted salamander. So, in twenty twenty, in July, we found a spotted salamander on the property. And I addressed that one where I'm assuming that it probably came from, you know, up in this kind of area. So even if Clemens didn't find them there, I think that's just probably up there. But I don't know what the other species, the other ones. We found a lot of species on our property, but spotted is the only one that I remember offhand. I mean, I've seen other frogs, but I don't know which frogs they are, I haven't touched them, just let them be.
When you found the blue spotted salamander, did you contact DEEP?
Uh, I did not find the blue spot, don't know if my mom did, I found these just regular spotted salamanders.
Okay.
But that's a good point. You know, we do want to encourage citizens to report sightings and request an NDB database diversity, you know, that, that, the NDB, that they take a look at the, the specific data that you have, the proof that you have, so that they can take a look at the area and determine whether it's an NDB, NDB area to be protected. Without that, we, we're not herpetologists, and, and we have a hard time. If they don't say it's there, we can't request an, we can request an NDB review, but it will take way longer than our application. So it's better that citizens do that on their own, like the box turtle that Paula Jelli had seen. It'd be great if they, if she had reported it. I know that's hindsight, but it, it can only help us, we can't, we can't do what we don't know.
Yeah, I have no clue what it is, if that's something I can do without.
It's National Diversity Database.
National Diversity Database.
And it, and it says where there are species of endangered and protected and, but it gives us a little.
Gives us some information that, like, you know, we've got a whole bunch of these photos here, and maybe these pictures were taken on your property or not, we, we just don't know. And we're not saying that these are fake, they're false or whatever, but without having validation of these, it's hard for us to take this into consideration if we don't know where the information came from.
Yeah, the only, I use iNaturalist, it's a like website for, you know, uploading different species that you find. You put in the picture, you put in the location. I do have an account there, and I did actually list the, the regular spotted salamander. So going back to my account, that one does, it does show the location, it does show the ID.
I don't know if that is a, have you heard of that?
Yeah, it's a, we find.
Unfortunately, that's.
So you see, you find, you, these are, these are animals that, that could live there. Through the database?
Uh, if you go on iNaturalist, those are all people actually, you have to physically find the animal. So like, I use it a lot when I go hiking and if I can find, like, I have found, like, blue spotted, not on our property, not so, that's not related to this. But you find, you take the pictures and you upload it. So it is a map of where people find certain species.
I think what commissioners are saying, right, is the picture's great, but without the metadata behind the picture, it's hard to say when and where and et cetera, right?
Yeah, iNaturalist would be the only way that I can clarify that.
Right, so.
It is several.
Who took and submitted these, these photos to us? Okay, can, can you come up and comment on these? Because, again, without context, it's hard for us to do anything with this.
I agree, my concern.
So please just restate your name for the record, please.
Michelle Saltaziac, two thirty seven Cottage Street. My concern is that people in my foraging and picking groups, and yes, is inherited as well, that you put these up on public places, people will post them. She's had people solicit her when she puts something up saying, hey, I'll buy it from you. And it's a concern with DEEP. So I've never been aware of a site that I could post something that would serve a benefit such as this without making my findings visible to the public, especially when you come across danger, endangered species or of special concern, because then people go looking for them there and you take them.
I understand, I'm, I'm specifically asking about these photos that you submitted, and, and I, I don't understand the context of.
Oh, the context was just there in Web Mountain Park.
So it's in Web Mountain Park?
Correct, and because it was in Monroe, and it's still on the same tract, and it's still roughly, what I can think of, I'm not an engineer, potentially same elevations, I at least wanted you guys to see. These are things that I know between the one on our property, the frogs were on our property, but the other salamanders are webbed. I wanted you to at least see that, at least we, even if you don't know, we know, and it's why we're so passionate, that we know they're here in Monroe, even if I can't report it to you.
Right, well, this isn't specific to this site, this is just.
Well, no, we can't go on that site, it's public.
Well, that's why I'm, I'm just trying to understand where these photos were taken and, and when, and.
One spotted salamander is the only one that was in this vicinity.
Okay.
Yes, I did go into my email, the spotted salamander, I specifically said, you know, it was not found on this property. I simply wanted to show, you know, the picture of the one that I found and that it could have come from up there, which is why, you know, part of why I'm concerned about this. But, you know, I'm not claiming that that one was found on that property, only others found a couple of streets away, and that's part of why I'm concerned.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying. Anybody else in the, please state your name and address and the sign in sheet.
Good evening, everybody. Clifford Cuzio, sixty eight, East Village Road, on the south side of Web Mountain, but what's the discovery zone? I'm sitting here listening, I'm just going to add a comment. I can't quote scientists or studies or tell you about anything that has factual information, I can just give you reality. I built the house twenty five years ago on the old Muspek Farm on the south side of the mountain. Had the people come in, get opposed to me cutting two and a half acres of trees, disturbing the soil, putting in a DEEP foundation. I will tell you this, I lost to nature. The moles found their ways back in the yard. I have red-tailed hawks that nest on my. I have red-tailed hawks that nest on my property, I enjoy the babies every year. I've got three pair, uh, piliated woodpeckers nesting on the edge of the property. The fox got hard on my dog, so they moved their nests from the woods where the dog could see them to under my, down below shed. They find, I have a stream that goes through them in my property. Everything nature finds its way back to the water, they'll relocate, they'll, they'll find a way to get to where I have to go. They'll ignore the dog, my dog hates them, I have deer, they come and they eat right in the garden. They don't care about the house, eventually they get used to it. So I don't oppose this project and I'm not for this project, I'm just stating reality. You build the house, nature finds its way back. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the chambers, please come on up?
Hi. My name is Samantha Beere and I live at five at Sunrise Terrace, Sierra Monroe. As I've done quite a few times before, I am, as a very concerned citizen, excuse me, sorry. As a very concerned citizen of Monroe and the coalition of neighbors who have spoken up against the application of Dan's land development, we're seeking a permit to build a cluster subdivision on the parcels of land at fifteen sixty, oh, sorry, fifteen thirty-six and fifteen sixty-four Monroe Turnpike. I would be remiss not to say that the comment, the attorneys who so made at the last meeting regarding some of the tiny creatures that will be adversely affected by this development absolutely floored me. And I quote, "The eastern box turtle, the salamanders, these things aren't under the purview of the wetlands agency." End quote. May goodness, Dr. Clemens spoke up and said that the destruction of in-stream biota is a problem within, in, in-stream biota is a problem within the stream borders that falls squarely within the purview of this wetland agency. The reason why I think I, um, all of a sudden find myself getting a little bit upset is because this has been very hard for the residents. We don't, we aren't making any money out of this. We don't see a lot of benefits to this. I just keep thinking about all of the animals. And yeah, nature does find a way, just like water finds, you know, water finds a way as we saw in the most recent storms. And one, in, in order to try and enlighten myself and figure, find out, learn more about inland wetlands, I watched a lot of the videos that you watch for your training. And one thing that seemed to come up throughout the videos is the need to protect these areas as a whole and not just the area that is directly affected, such as the road area. The entire property is a huge ecosystem whose water and wildlife relies upon a symbiotic relationship. The problem that this type of development does is that it fragments the wetlands and the forest, not only separating members of the same species, but also making it much harder for these creatures to travel across large areas. To the point that the gentleman just spoke about animals finding a way, that might be one thing for bears, coyotes, fox, et cetera. But we are specifically talking here about endangered creatures such as salamanders who can't just get up and walk however many feet that they need to move. Like they're very, um, they're very small creatures, I mean, they get run over by cars, they get, you know, adverse flooding is gonna run over them, like runoff from, from lawns. That will, they will seep that into their skin and they'll die. I mean, these are all, these are facts. And to that end, you know, people talk about nuisance wildlife, I've had a bear, I've had, we've had a bear at our house on our front steps. Um, you know, we weren't that bothered by it, but a lot of people are. So when you take away habitat from these animals, they are going to end up in your backyard and in your trash cans. And, you know, coyotes, et cetera, coming after your dogs. The point is, I, I, I have a question about whose purview are all of the animals or all of the wildlife animals such as we just mentioned, deer, um, fox, birds? Is that not also inland wetlands because it's all related? I just, even though I, I've tried to, I've tried to do my research, I just don't understand who, who cares about those animals? You know, because if it is harder for the, for the bears and, and, and all of the other animals that we've talked about to get to their water, you know, maybe they end up in the roads trying to get to where they need to go and then they get hit or they get shot or whatever the case, the case may be. But, um, I just want to be clear, a few things that Dr. Clemens said, and I, and I keep mentioning him because he is the third-party consultant who doesn't have anything to gain from this. Um, he preferred the three-sided culvert and said that that was pretty standard for this type of, um, ecological area. But it seems like, and who knows, maybe it's, it is a P and Z issue, but it seems like that that isn't going to happen. He also recommended not using this baffle culvert, which I thought was to do with fish, not amphibians. Uh, I'm a little, I'm a little unclear about that. And then also, um, my last question, why can it not be a private road? Why does it have to be maintained by the town? Is that because of the amount of homes that would be on the land? That's a question I have, that, that, that seems to have come up in a lot of meetings, is James making reference to, well, if the town takes, you know, if the town takes this over, I just, that's just one thing that's been on my mind. Passionate about it, so sorry, I wasn't expecting to cry, that wasn't a, a ploy. Um, but I've spent a lot of time, you know, away from my job and my family and, you know, trying to do what's best for the creatures that can't speak. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Tom. Anybody else in the chambers who'd like to speak? Or anybody online who would like to, uh, speak? We have one person raise their hand.
I'm not able to raise my hand, but I also wish to speak, this is Kelly Hengus Corono.
Okay, uh, who had their hand up first, I can't see.
I'm Mark Lamont.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna ask for some leeway, I, I guess I like a few others that will likely exceed three minutes, but I won't go too much past that.
Can you just please state your, your name and address for the record, please?
Mark Lamont, uh, fifty-one Downs Road, at the top of the hill, at the very apex of the, the backside of this proposed development. First, I'd like to address the man who got up, I didn't hear his name, uh, who I think, if I heard correctly, was saying that there was one house built next to his property and, and the animals responded and they figured it out. Well, we're not talking about a house, we're talking about eight. And we're talking about eight houses that are built in and adjacent to and across a wetlands that's supposed to be protected by law. So there's, I think there's a significant difference there. You know, everybody's asking for proof of what we all pretty much in the neighborhood know is on that property. Um, but we're not allowed to have access to take pictures to verify and document what we know is on that property. So can we have access to the property? We'll, we'll patrol the area and we'll take pictures all day long and submit them to the commission so that you can see what we see and know that lives there on that property every day. With that, I, I just, I'm, I'm baffled because I don't understand why this project continues to move forward. The, the dialogue in these meetings and these hearings are supposed to be a public hearing, I've kind of said this before, but the, the main part of the hearing is you all continue to talk about finding engineering solutions. And as if it's a, a foregone conclusion that this development is going to happen, that it will take place. The public, and I'll, and I'll say including Dr. Clemens, has consistently discussed and brought to everybody's attention the unique nature and value that this thirty-plus acre property has. It is an ecosystem. The public has spoken out against the development of the property, providing heartfelt, factual, and even legal input about the harm that would result from its development. I listen to all this discussion about a culvert. First of all, an eleven percent grade on a culvert is, that's nuts. Sorry for my being so direct. Um, and if the culvert is such an issue, I, I just keep coming back to a very simplistic thing, why bother? Just stop right now. Mr. De Mayo, I, I don't know you, but what I've heard you say at least twice publicly during these hearings is that he doesn't care what the developer, what the developer does on private property. That's a real concern, is it not? I mean, let's just let it rip. The inland wetland statute does take into consideration the impact of any disturbance in or around a wetlands and a water table, and its water table. Part of the intent is to protect it from overdraft. The construction of eight new homes in, around, and adjacent to this particular property would certainly have impact on overdraft. It's gonna take water right out of that watershed. It's supposed to protect it from the negative impact to the wetlands drainage area and the downstream erosion that will almost certainly occur that will change the nature of the, the wetlands and its surroundings. So. It's supposed to protect the wildlife habitat, not just rare salamanders and, and other interesting amphibians, but the daily parade of coyotes, raccoons, skunks, deer, bobcats, red fox, red-tailed and red-shouldered hawks, owls, fisher cats, and black bear that we've captured on our, on our, uh, our property's cameras. I could, I could, I could, uh, inundate your inboxes with these pictures and videos that we've taken of all these animals. They all depend on that thirty-plus acre ecosystem and they need it to be protected, those animals need it to be protected. To dismiss these wildlife considerations, not just the unique amphibians, saying it's not part of the protocol of the IWC is actually not correct. This, this, I'm gonna read it again, Brian, Brian just read it tonight, I'm gonna re, I've read it into the record previously. I'm just gonna restate once, one passage from the statute, twenty-two A to thirty-six to twenty-two A to forty-five. Just this part, preventing loss, your, your, the obligation of the IWC, preventing loss of fish and other beneficial aquatic organisms, wildlife and vegetation, and the destruction of the natural habitats thereof. That doesn't specify unique amphibians or endangered amphibians. A multitude of animals live, eat, and flourish on this proposed pro, on one's property, the proposed development. What I haven't heard discussed at all is the IWC, and I've looked this up, there are appellate and Supreme Court cases in the state of Connecticut that verify this, I can read you some of them here. The IWC has discretionary authority to deny development outside the one-hundred-foot upland review area if such development is deemed to negatively impact the wetlands. There's sign, and there are a significant number of Connecticut appellate and Supreme Court cases granting and upholding this authority. I, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna cut to the, I'll, I'll just get to the summary of one. There's one case, for example, Prestige Builders LLC versus Inland Wetlands Commission Supra at seven eighteen, quoting Quech Corporation versus Inland Wetlands Commission Supra two fifty-eight, Connecticut at one ninety-three. It's an appellate court decision. The court concluded that twenty-two A dash forty-two A grants a commission the authority to regulate upland review areas in its discretion if it finds such, such regulations necessary to protect wetlands or watercourses from activity that will likely affect those areas. The validity of municipal regulations extending the jur- jurisdiction of the local inland wetlands commission to upland review areas that reach beyond the physical boundaries of wetlands or watercourses consistently have been upheld by our Supreme Court. Silizote versus Conserva Conservation Commission Supra two sixteen, Connecticut at three three seven. It's there. The developer continues to present his engineering plans, but at the end of the day, they are just plans. We who live here realize they don't address reality. They fail to recognize the fact that everything being proposed will negatively impact this unique property. For the record, the diagram and discussion of the drainage, culverts, catch basins, basins and such alongside and underneath one eleven did not work during our recent event. Yes, recognizably, it was an extreme event, but not completely out of the ordinary. That drainage system didn't hold the water at all. I've got videos I can send you of that, too. I went out there that morning and I took videos of the water cascading down one ten, or excuse me, one eleven, coming off of Stevenson Lumber's old lumberyard where all the property's been denuded. I'll be glad to send you what was the, the Grand Canyon, lava rapids, um, whitewater kayak. And it will happen again. At the last hearing, Dr. Clemens said, "The latest proposal with open space and conservation easements is not enough. It needs more, it needs to buffer the property and the wetlands more." Currently, it provides no buffer. Doesn't do enough to protect what we all know, what he called, Dr. Clemens, "A special and unique wetlands and piece of property." So I ask, what is enough? I mean, to me, and to those from the public who have spoken, no development is enough. Please don't allow it and protect it instead. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. I see somebody else has their hand up.
Paula.
I think Kelly, I think Kelly was first.
She couldn't raise her hand, so maybe let her go first.
Kelly? Kelly, are you there?
Are you still there?
Kelly, you're up.
Thank you, Kelly Hengus Corono, nineteen Shoals Road in Monroe. I'm a Connecticut State Master Gardener and. Um, once again, back to the state statute, I don't know why in two thousand, between two thousand and two thousand twenty-four, we have had multiple applications to build on this land. In two thousand, a road was not allowed. Um, allowed with a shared driveway, and I know that hearing has not. We can now safely put houses, it's like a dream, we can safely put houses, nothing will be impacted in the wetlands. All of the creatures will live and now, you know, oh my gosh, we have, like, we can do anything we want on wetlands and nothing will be impacted. That has not occurred. So once again, the Connecticut State statute says you cannot put a road. We're just saying, Monroe's just saying, hey, it doesn't matter unless we get sued that we can put a road in on a wetlands. Um, as everyone said, we have sent in copious emails, we have, um, you know, done studies away from, been away from our families, taken time away because we live here and we understand the impact that any development on this land will have. Um, when my well goes dry because of this for the overdraft, I'm first in line to be in a lawsuit over this because I have my original well for my house from nineteen thirty that still works. That's about fifteen feet deep, so as soon as my water's gone, I'm, I'll be coming, I guess, for the town because that's the only recourse we have. Monroe, I, I really hope that the inland wetlands commissions, um, has some integrity and really takes the time to think about this because this is the, this is like the third failed, this is the third application on this property and obviously it's not buildable. So please have integrity and stop this so that, you know, we can all continue to live here symbiotically with nature as we talked about before, I've talked about it. Not beat a dead horse, none of us use chemicals on our lawns for a reason, we all understand the water near us, it's a finite resource and I, you know, I don't live in an area where I can just go, hey, let's do five loads of laundry one day. It won't happen at my house because of the amount of water that takes to refill my well and the land. We do not live like that on city water here. And, and you know, planning and zoning is trying to deregulate the cluster houses that are supposed to have public water. I mean, it really just, you know, a fish rots from the head down and I'm very concerned about the integrity of our drinking water and the wildlife here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, looks like we have Paula.
Paula.
Uh, hello, my name is Paula Jelly, I live at two ninety Cottage Street, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
We can.
Thank you. I have two questions. I have two questions. And the first one, forgive me if I didn't understand the answer because the sound cuts in and out since I'm on Zoom. The chairman had mentioned about something in exhibit fifty-five. Fifty-five, exhibit fifty-five is not listed on the exhibits. It goes from fifty-four to fifty-six, so it's missing.
I will confirm that we have it in our physical file. I will confirm with staff that it gets uploaded immediately first thing in the morning if it's not there.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Kathleen. My second question is about the open space. When is that open space available for the public to utilize and access? And at what, where on the open space do they access it from? Do they access it from Manor Drive? Do they have to wait till the whole subdivision is completed to access it through other people's properties? How do they access it?
Well, that'll be something that the applicant will have to address.
Yeah. I, I think we're talking about the little square space up in the corner.
Yes.
I think that it's being designated to be open space. That does not mean that it's like a, immediately a public park. And so if the town chooses at some point to create a pathway to that, if there's something right, am I wrong about that?
So as part of, so this application is for this commission for actually two items. It's one for a subdivision referral because this will be a subdivision application in front of planning and zoning, and it's for an IWC application for the actual disturbance to the wetland and the upland review area. When we do a vote, we're actually going to have to do two separate votes on, on both of those items. So as part of the subdivision referral, it'll then next go to the planning and zoning commission. As part of that, our subdivision regulations have a very clear open space requirement, that it needs access from a public road, things of that nature. If it doesn't have access from a public road, then normally we do an easement in favor of the town to make sure that the public has access to it. So all those details get worked out during the planning and zoning application as it relates to open space.
So as far as the timing, though, when the public can get to it? I think that's also needs to be, that's going to be up to the
The subdivision, once it gets approved, it has to go through the conditions of the approval, whatever those may or may not be. And then eventually a subdivision map gets filed.
Assuming it gets approved, at some point, it's still not accessible to the public because they're still doing construction, so
Well, when the subdivision map gets filed, they actually subdivide that property and all the easements and covenants go into place. So at that time, technically, it's considered to be open space. Thank you very much.
Uh, looks like we have Peggy Lamont with her hand up.
Hello.
Go ahead, state your name and address on the record, please.
Sure. My name is Peggy Lamont. I live at fifty-one Downs Road. I've submitted, I think, exhibit ten in my opposition to this development. And I just wanted to just kind of summarize a few things because over the last several months, there's been so many negative words that have come up regarding the, the property as it pertains to the inlands and wetlands, which I think, again, goes to a lot of the opposition. But one of them is the degradation and its impact of the livelihood, whether it's the neighborhood or whether it's the animals. I know that at the beginning of all of these conversations that we have, it wasn't about the animals, but it really does have to do with the animals. They have a habitat there. And it is really important to us because we all admire that. We all appreciate that. And we don't want to see a degradation because it's been developed. Second is also the pollutants. New construction is really toxic in this environment, in this very special place where plants and animals are, are all there. And, you know, new construction really leaves sediments that's going to be in the waters. That's why we're all worried about our wells. We're worried about our lawns. You know, we are a, a unique neighborhood and community where we all are looking out for each other. And I think that's one of the reasons why we're all here and we're all joining together to make sure this is best for the community. I know Monroe maybe has one of my trying to say. You need to do more housing for different types of people in the neighborhood. But I don't think that this piece of property, these two pieces of property together is the right piece of property to develop on. Again, as we've talked about, whether it's the wetlands, the, it's not a really good property to actually build upon. We actually think as a neighborhood, it would be very bad for people to be moving there and then have problems with their new homes. There is a lot of negativity about, you know, shallow water depths and the impact on neighborhood wells, the possibility of drought, you know, and then who, after the developers develop the property, who's responsible for that? Is it the individual person? Or do we have to actually go against the, the town and the community and make a stink? Because we now have to put a lawsuit against the town, which is never a good thing. And then, you know, lastly, it's just, it's killing the, the biodiversity of the area. And we've spent a lot of times in the last two, two meetings about whether a three-sided or four-sided culvert would work when in actuality, maybe three or four smaller culverts would, would work, but it would be maybe more money. So, I mean, there's a lot of different things, but I think in, in general, the, the basic premise is that it, all of this development has an adverse effect, and it's really a threat to our neighborhood, our kids, our community, our animals. And that's what I think, that's one of the primary reasons why I'm so opposed to this development. And especially, lastly, because not only the experts, meaning, you know, and part of your team, part of the commission, has said that it's a special place. It's a unique place. And if it's so special and unique, I don't understand why we're trying to develop on it. And I just want that to be taken into consideration because once you've taken it away, you can never replace it again, and that really breaks my heart. And I thank you for your time and listening to my thoughts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, I, I see Mr. Lamont has to stand up again. Before we go back to you, Mr. Lamont, I want to see if there's anybody else who is interested in speaking. Anybody else online? No? Okay, Mr. Lamont, floor is yours again. Please state your name and address.
Yeah, yes, Mark Lamont, fifty-one Downs Road. I just, just something I overheard in these discussions just now. And about the, about the open space easement versus the conservation easement. And if I have read all the meeting minutes and, and notes and Dr. Clemens additions to the whole, the whole thing correctly, I believe what Dr. Clemens is saying is that there should be no open space easement. That, that the whole thing, I mean, if, first of all, I don't want it to take place, but were it to take place, the development of the property, that, that any easement should be conservation easement to make sure that that wetlands and the cliff area where the water seepage comes through the cliffs and feeds into the wetlands. So that's all protected and not just open to hiking trails. I mean, somebody asked me at the last meeting, would I hike up there? Well, actually, I get, I said yes, not thinking it through. Because if it's, if it's all a unique environmental area and ecosystem, then the whole thing should just be protected and not open space, but rather conservation easement. Dr. Clemens said it. I concur with that for what that's worth. And that's all. Thank you. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Is there anybody else online who would like to speak? Last chance, anyone online? All right. Anybody else in the chambers? One more chance.
My apologies.
Please state your name for the, yeah.
Last thing I want to do is extend this because I know last one, the doctor. I just was not hearing everybody's emotional and there's eight houses, Mr. Lamont, thank you. Not just one. Just quickly look at a map I have on my phone. It's approximately fifty to sixty houses right along this. There's people living there, the people who are saying they don't want to eat more houses. And there's no open space around those fifty or sixty houses that's being accommodated for a lot of them from most of their neighborhoods. And I just think it's interesting that this group here, and again, I don't oppose or deny or against this, but they're, they're offering accommodations to block out land, make open space, put eight houses. There's fifty to sixty houses cluttered in there along this. Nobody wants other houses in there. Their houses aren't causing any effect to the salamanders or the frog. My frog, I'm chasing frogs out of my garage every night. I got a snake's nest. They, they worked their way up two hundred and fifty foot of curtain drain pipe during a tricean and nested in my basement through it. They're gonna, it's, 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 I hear the, the concerns. I hear the emotions. But again, eight houses versus sixty houses cluttered in there already. I, I think, I think there's some over emotion here, and again, thank you. I apologize for dragging this.
Come on up.
Actually, I'd like to speak again after that.
Okay, we'll, we'll get
Two thirty-seven Cottage Street. I'll make it real quick. I disagree with the everything finds a way back. If that were the case, things wouldn't be dangerous. If that were the case, we wouldn't have things that are of special concern. Connecticut itself in the last two years has received over fifteen million from the feds to replant trees because there are towns, and I can't remember them offhand. I had it at the last meeting, that have taken down so many trees to build properties that now they have issues with the ground cover drying out and things can't survive in the pride. Now we're trying to put trees back. So I disagree. Thank you.
Somebody online had their hand up again?
Yes, Kelly Hengis Corano, nineteen Shoals Road. Um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. My house has been here since about nineteen thirty, and once again, I'm using my original well. Obviously, the houses that are here, as I had said before, we don't use. There are no green lawns. Drive around. I, 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 I invite all of you to come drive up Downs Road and drive up Sunrise and see how symbiotically we live with nature. We don't use chemicals. A lot of us don't even have lawns. I myself am putting in some micro clover to help with some nitrogen reclamation. And it's just that we've been here for a long time. Our, the, the houses that are here have been here for a long time. Rarely does a new home go up in this area. And simply, we don't have the water for this. We, it comes down to our drinking water and the wildlife. We live here. We live here with the wildlife. We enjoy the wildlife. We don't need to have our wells overdrafted, and I just hope that you will all take that into consideration rather than rubber stamp another development in Monroe. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Jelly, I see you put your hand up again?
Yes, please.
Go ahead.
You're up.
Um, my house was built in nineteen forty-three. Mark Lamont's house, I think, was built in nineteen thirty-one. He could confirm or deny that. But all of these homes back there were built almost a hundred years ago. And when building, um, what's the word I'm looking for? Our building standards are much better now, and our concerns are much greater now than it was a hundred years ago. We know better. We don't build homes that close anymore. But these homes are there, and we need to protect their groundwater rights. There, you need to protect from overdraft of groundwater. We can't tell these people, okay, half of you have to move to accommodate a new zoning regulation like RF two. You don't ask people to move and knock their homes down. They're there. They can't do anything about how close they are anymore. But going forward, the town has zoned this area according to new standards, to modern standards. So any criticize, criticizing of how close these homes are in the Stevenson area is unwarranted. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else online? Anybody else in the chambers?
Again, sixty East Phila Road. Just, I just want to comment about the trees. Um, I do have some experience with this in a past life. I worked for D E P. My son is involved. But the Yule Scott Project, the trees replanting funding was for the blight and the elm tree disease, not because we cut trees down. Thank you. I'm done.
Okay, Mr. Lamont, did you have your hand up again?
I, I did, yes, thank you. Yeah, Mark Lamont, fifty-one Downs Road. I, I guess I'll just reiterate what Paula just said. We're an older neighborhood up here. Yes, Paula, you're correct. Our house was built in nineteen thirty-one. The whole neighborhood up here, as I understand it, was built as a, a cabin community for people from the Bronx, Brooklyn, and New York City back in the beginning stages of, of Lake Zor as a recreational destination for, for those people coming from New York. So yes, we have, we have a little twelve hundred square foot, I'll call it a camp. That's all it is. Pretty modest homes up here. It's good for, it's good for a couple that, like Peggy and myself, who, we don't have kids. It's great neighborhood. It's, it is out in the nature. I think we have half, what, half acre zoning as compared to what's supposed to be two acre zoning throughout the community of, of Monroe, which apparently that's changing, too. That's another discussion. But, um, yeah, we are what we are. We've been here for almost a hundred years now. We didn't have rules when these houses were built. They were just built as camps, built by the people who bought the property. We had some storm damage about three years ago and, and had a major insurance claim. We now have a new home on the same footprint. That's now up to code. The point of that is that the, this home was very old. The electric, the electrical system in the house was old. None of the homes up here were ever built to code. So to, for this gentleman to stand up, stand there and say, well, you got sixty homes all clustered together. Well, that's what we bought. That's what was here. That's what was built. That's what existed. Today is a different day. So until you live here, I guess, you know, live here first. Thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, this is Kelly Hengis Corano. If I might speak one more time, please.
Sure.
This act, this area was called Summer Colony. And what I've researched about this area, my home, by the way, is thirteen hundred and forty-four square feet. We do not have air conditioning, no central air at all. We use ceiling fans. We rarely have an AC running. We have one for my husband that works nights. We, we, we literally live symbiotically with nature up here. This area was called Summer Colony, and you, what, what I've researched is that each little plot of land was given after, you get a subscription to what was formerly the Bridgeport Post and what is now the Connecticut Post. And my home is actually on three lots. So, you know, this, as Mr. Lamont said, this area was built as a cabin community. We don't have McMansions up here, which, as you drive through Monroe and the three thousand, five thousand, eight thousand square foot homes, that's not us. I think the average around here is about fifteen hundred square feet, and I'm being generous. My neighbors live in a house that's twelve hundred square feet, and I've got two neighbors next to me. I'm looking at their houses right now. I think they're nine hundred square feet. So we are So, we are not using, you know, like I said, five loads of wash, you know, we, these are small, small homes. And the homes that are being built are not small homes, so once again, think about that when you rule on this, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else online? Anybody else in the chambers? Okay, I think that's kind of in the public participation part of this.
With the applicant, do you guys have any comments?
Any comments based on what we've just heard? Or actually, yeah, we'll comment and then I think we'll take a little recess.
Chair, I don't, I, I, I think we're ready for our final comments, but I, I
Name and
Oh, sorry, Chris Russo, Russo, Resi, this is Ted Sescel, we're field here on behalf of, yeah. Um, uh, I think we're ready for our final comments, but I, I guess the question to the commission would be if, if it's being left open for another hearing, then we would wait for that in case there was any additional evidence that was submitted, but if it's going to conclude tonight, then, you know, we, we're ready to, to make our final response and comments.
Okay, so let's ask the commission here, do we have any more questions for the applicant? That they can either address tonight or that we're going to need them to come back?
I don't.
And, sorry, and submit material, because once the public hearing is closed, the applicant can no longer submit any additional material. Staff can still give you, like, staff could still answer questions or update a memo or something of the sort, but the applicant can't present any evidence.
So, again, I'll ask everybody and we'll go down the line, is there anything that you need from the applicant for them to either address tonight or submit additional documentation or information?
Commissioner Finnegan, no.
Commissioner Smith, I would like to, uh, appreciate the tree clearing report for the first three hundred and fifty feet. But I'd like to know what else, you know, we talked about it, we did see some relatively open spaces for lots seven and eight. I'd like to know, uh, I'd like to, I don't know why they stopped at three hundred and fifty feet, I, I understand that it's in the upper review area, but um, just because these, one, one story eight are also in that area, upper review area, I would like to know, uh.
That's cool.
Well, yeah, just so, so, so that was the area that we're proposing clearing for this project and, and just so, because I know there were comments, I was going to address this in my podcast, but the houses proposed and all the driveways are completely outside the upper review area. But if a lot came, if somebody came in for future, well, sorry, what's the lot number that's, that's got up?
Seven or eight.
Seven or eight, right, so seven or eight, if somebody came in, eventually somebody will come in if it was, obviously, for a house. And they were going into the upper review area and they wanted to clear trees, they would have to come back to you for that. But the tree clearing that report that was submitted is just for the work that's proposed in this application. Which, there you go, so you could see eight, where we're proposing it right now, the driveway in the house is totally outside the upper review. But for instance, if, if the future owner of eight came in and was like, well, you know what, I wanna, I wanna put a shed beyond the red line there, they would have to come back to you and, and request, and I think that was one of the things that basically Kathleen was talking about with regards to tree clearing. That's a, you know, that's a different permit, it's not as bright, that person would have to come back to you.
So just to be clear, uh, Mr. Russo.
Yes.
Those driveways do not take out any large, trees larger than a twelve, twelve inch diameter?
They don't, they're not within the upper review area.
Okay, alright, well, there is an effect, you know, especially, you know, eight is close to the hundred feet. Hundred feet is not, is not a magic, uh, number, it's, you know, there, there is some effect, hundred twenty feet away, hundred fifty feet away. I'm just saying that, you know, I'm just trying to figure out what kind of effect these large trees will have.
Okay, well, and, and they were just telling me, so this drains away from the well on two, is that right?
So the driveway for lot, you know, eight, who the outside is, all of that drains away towards the road and not towards the wetlands, there's a little bridge line there.
So all the, all the runoff from, from, from all those lots will be collected into the storm sewer system, brought into the retention basin and not go into any of the wetlands?
The developed portion of it.
Right.
Yeah, just to clarify, Jason, that's true on, on, well, it's true on all lots, but, uh, some of them have onsite retention systems as well, so
Right, okay.
On-site versus going into the, the town drainage, but in theory, yes, they are.
So all, from, from looking at all the lots, right, so all that water will be collected, not running down the hills, not into Ms. Jellies' property. This will be collected and into either storm retention basins on an individual's property or the one towards the beginning of the road there. So all that rainwater will be collected, stored and then not go into the wetlands and actually not even go down the hill towards Ms. Jellies' property, so in effect, this sounds like it's actually helping protect her property more than what's there now.
That's correct, yeah, there'd be controlled runoff and we'd be collecting in the three different detention basins that are, are along the one eleven front. Uh, and then on, in the onsite systems as they are needed. And if anybody does come in or when they come in for building permits, we, we've allocated a certain amount of impervious area per lot. So if they exceed that amount, then they'd have to also add additional retention to, to account for anything more than what we've shown here, so. And that would be a separate building permit for each individual lot as they come up. That will be reviewed by the town engineer and other staff.
My second point, um, is along the lines of what Dr. Clemens said with regard to, uh, the record, uh, okay. Representation, representation is made, the stream crossing is not, is needed because DOT won't allow access to the adjacent state highway, eliminating the need for a crossing to the applicant's property. The record could be approved, and I appreciate this, if either there was a letter stating this from the DOT or a letter from the applicant. Uh, or James De Mayo, if he, if he, if he could, I, but, you know, I, we really liked, we really would strongly prefer an entrance that doesn't go across the wetlands.
I provided an email from the DOT stating that
Did.
The entrance has to
Sorry, I, it is so much information.
Well, it's one of the original, it's something that's been so many
The project there.
It's in there.
I'm just reacting to Dr. Clemens.
Sure.
And so possibly such a letter exists and I have overlooked it.
There's a lot.
Thank you.
You good?
I'm good with just, the, the only other thing is I still don't have any data that shows that this specific culvert design is the appropriate culvert design. I understand what people are saying, but if we're gonna, if we're gonna do a culvert, we want to do it correctly. And I, there's just no proof that your baffle system and, and, you know, it, it's not tested.
Again, um, like Dr. Clemens said, um, he was, he wanted to know who's downstream because he
But, uh, he, he's, I'm talking about the, the design of the culvert that you're proposing.
Yeah, the baffles are kind of to keep the stone in place. A lot of bottom, uh, where there's a slope like this, it has to be stone, so the baffles keep the stones in place, it keeps a low flow channel.
I, I, I don't disagree with low flow channel, it is more in line with what I was asking for in the head of federal highway administration as well as the fish and wildlife. That's what they, that, that, that goes in, is more in line with that.
That, when you have a stream, that's where you have, you have a low flow channel, and that's what we're proposing with the culvert.
And he also submitted, because I know there was a question about some studies, he did submit a number of studies, um, regarding amphibian tunnels, I, I actually read it over while everybody was talking.
But I know, but just for clarification, this is what I had asked earlier, I don't believe those studies were specifically for baffled culverts, that was the question I was asking.
Maybe they're into the baffles, but the baffles hold the stones in place.
Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Smith actually had my question, and it was about the trees, so that was, that was answered, so I have no further, further question.
Commissioner Kelly? Um, yeah, Commissioner Kelly, for me, I'm just curious about Commissioner Stewart's question, so I don't want to steal his thunder, just about the height of the, of the culvert. Um, and the grade of the culvert and, um, I'm, I'm, I guess I'm curious if you feel that more is needed based on the, the things that you've heard.
I'm, I'm not quite comfortable with the openness ratio and, and the grade of the culvert, if the Connecticut standards talk about a maximum of three percent grade for a, a, you know, a box culvert. It, it makes sense to me with the amount of, of, of water, the velocity of water going through it. Um, I think that, uh, that if it's properly designed and you span, um, whatever it is, one point two times the, the width of the water, so you're well outside the channel. And you, and you go down deep enough so, and a scour analysis is done so that you're not going to impact, um, the footings. Um, I think it can be done, um, hopefully in a way that, uh, that the town can accept it. Um, I understand, uh, James De Mayo's concerns, um, but I would be concerned that if it's not done properly, uh, and it's a ten percent grade and those baffles don't hold up, um, that he's going to be called and that he's going to say, well, guess what, all the stones have washed out from your, from your culvert. We need you to put them all back in there, or, or it's washed out the end of the culvert and there's a big divot now, we need you to fill that back in. That doesn't happen when you've got a natural culvert and you've, and you've spanned it, um, you know, more than six feet. So that's my thought at this point, and I don't know where I'll come down on either side, given no more information. Um, but, um, I haven't, I haven't seen, uh, enough to convince me that those stones will stay in. Um, and that it, that the require, that the recommendation that over three percent is, is not important.
Jason Edwards with the record, I'm not entirely familiar with the requirement you're referring to, so I'll have to look at that, but we did provide calculations that satisfied James De Mayo as to the, the river rap and the velocity of the water traveling over it and that it was going to stay in place, he did require that. He's reviewed the detail with my team thoroughly and he's accepting his town engineer responsible for maintaining. Um, to me, that holds quite a bit of, of value. Um, as far as the openness ratio, we would certainly be willing to, to, you know, increase the height of it, like we discussed, to make sure we meet that. I'll look at that calculation, if we did use the wrong units, then obviously we'll have to address that. Um, so we can, we'd be fine with doing that as a condition of approval to meet the height, or if you would have to look that way. Um, or we, you know, could leave it open and come back in, um, something that satisfies that. But to speaking to the span, I, I think James has really said that he's not going to accept it. Um, he's said it during the last couple hearings, I don't think you were here last one.
Oh, I, I watched the tape, I'm, 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 yeah, I'm fully aware.
Yeah, so it leaves us in a position that, you know.
I trust me as
Yeah, so
All the works director, I, I follow, I, I understand both sides of the equation.
Yeah, so, so we don't have, I mean, we, we did provide the alternative, but if he's not going to allow it to be built, then, you know, I'm not sure we're
Exactly, I
You know, uh, it's, that's an area.
I'm, I'm in favor of raising it up, just, I'd rather have more flow-through than, than I break its excess.
I'm not sure that they could, what I've seen, I'm not sure they could meet the openness ratio by just raising it up, I think it would have to go in both directions because it's far, it's far from where
Right.
Needs to be.
But maybe, so would you be able to make it wider and taller? I know we talked about taller, so taller, I, you said it right now.
What we have to do to meet that criteria
Would you make it wider, maybe wider also?
About the A C O E point two five criteria for openness that we discussed right there. Um, yeah, we'd be
And there is room to make it wider as well?
I, I believe so, yes. Should. It should be, yeah, it shouldn't be a problem to make it wider.
Would be interested in the length of the culvert, do you know what the length of the culvert, culvert is that you're proposing?
Fifty two to one length?
Fifty-five feet, yes, uh, what is it?
I want to say forty.
Forty-two.
I thought it was like forty-two. Section, so whatever the
Forty-seven feet.
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven, okay, thank you very much, James.
James, while, while we got you speaking up, um, did you hear our conversation about raising it in addition to making it wider, and do you have any thoughts on that, any reasons why you wouldn't?
No, there's no reason why I wouldn't, or why I would object, object to meeting that criteria, no.
Okay. More questions, any other?
Well, and I, you know, it's interesting because, you know, this is all about finding the, the feasible and prudent alternatives and we essentially they obviously can speak to this better than I can, but we've essentially arrived at what seems like two feasible improvements, really in the hands of the commission. Which one do we choose, there's the one that is higher up
Farm Road.
The farm road, where the grade is not eleven percent, it's, it's much less. And, but it is a greater, um, disturbance area. Or there's the one lower, which, which, where the grade changes and, but the, the overall impact is, is, is less. And so those, those essentially, I think, have come down to what the, what the two alternatives are, Jason's designed it both ways and they both work. Um, I guess it's really the determination of the commission, which one do they think is more
Right, and that's, that's why I wanted to have two options for us to be able to have that conversation, not have to go back and forth to you guys again. So we have option A and B for us to discuss and determine, you know, if we approve this, what's, what's the right answer, taking all that into consideration.
Matt, that, that farm road, uh, location, again, the banks are, are rody, as you saw, maybe four feet, five feet cuts. Where down below the lower one isn't, right?
Right, so.
I do have one other question. Did you, we, we talked about it a number of times, but I never heard it addressed as an option. Uh, and I, and I, and I know that there are concrete, uh, local concrete precast company can accommodate us, a span. A precast span of say twenty feet as opposed to a culvert where you take the span and you put it over the wetlands. Did you guys?
I believe, uh, James also indicated he would not be accepting that either, so we, the last discussion, we decided on, on Mr. Clemens' suggestion was the I think the bridge and the cross floater, so we, we decided as an alternative, um, so that, you know, we didn't provide a third one, but that would be the third alternative.
James, was that right, we, we used preferred no, no bridges, right, was that the?
Correct, correct, because now that's a bridge for eight residential houses. Um, so when that, when, when that basically needs replacement, it's, it's going to be significant, significant cost to the municipality at that point for eight residential houses. It's not on a main road, it's not on, you know, a, a path, you know, to the grocery store for a lot of different residents, it's literally just home to eight residents. Um, so it's not something that we would want to accept for that small of a development.
Right.
And James, uh, this is Richard Rick Smith, so the, the, the lifetime of a span you're saying is going to be less than our life, our lifetime, I mean, you know, it seems to me like highways have been put up hundreds and, and lasted for many, many decades, I, I just don't see where a span has to be, if it's properly done, uh, concrete is, you know
Yeah, no, it isn't.
Yeah, it's
No, you don't want a bridge, I understand where he's coming from, it's
All of the spans that we have across our highway systems and all across the world?
Twenty years, they're, they're chipping the concrete twenty-five years with the salt and they're chipping the concrete out, patching it and, and rebuilding it, sometimes replacing the decks, so it's, it's, it's a big, it's a big cost.
And, but, but what, what I have to reiterate to this commission is when, when understanding my, like, the town engineer stance and D P W stance, it's, it comes down to, again, the, that stance is purely for the maintenance and upkeep and everything else of that structure moving forward. Has nothing to do, and all the advice I'm giving you has nothing to do with what is the most significant or least significant impact to that wetland. Um, I, I just want to make sure that you understand that, it's just a piece of the puzzle, the back of your mind. But as a wetland commission, you know, you're, you're reviewing the application in terms of the impact.
Right, thank you. You have any other questions or comments?
I'm good, thank you.
Commissioners Emery, no additional questions?
Okay. Staff, do we have any comments or questions?
Um, I will make it quick, I just have a couple clarification items, I just want to make sure, you know, language was said, the dusty salamander is not a threatened endangered species, that was said a couple of times. Um, what Dr. Clemens had said is although it's not a threatened endangered species, it is rare for this geographic location. Um, what Dr. Clemens had said is although it's not a threatened endangered species, it is rare for this geographic location in the state of Connecticut, which is why he feels like it's a concern to be taken under consideration by this um commission. Um, my questions about the blue spotted salamander was because that is a threatened and endangered species. So if that was located on on cottage, that was going to be um something to be brought to your attention. However, it was noted that um the blue spotted salamander was um found, you know, somewhere else in in the state and was not part of that. Um, why can't the road be private? I do feel like that's been brought up that the applicant can expand on this, but that's not what they're proposing. They're proposing a traditional subdivision, of which case the town does accept the road. Um, if it was to be a private road, there would have to be some sort of homeowners association or things of that nature, but that would have to be something that the applicant proposes. That's not something that we you could. Do you want to expand on that?
Well, I I my recollection is something. Side of roads aren't even in the regulations. I think private commercial streets are the only one that's under the subdivision regulations.
Yeah, I I I guess it, yeah, technically wouldn't be a subdivision. You'd have to go, it would have to potentially be its own change to go to something else that then would be one parcel with like a puddle.
Like an MFR or something.
Mm hmm. It'd have to be something of that.
I don't think anybody would want to see.
Correct. So the applicant is proposing a subdivision regulation, which means that that road has to be accepted by the town as part of that approval process because as was mentioned, um, yeah, as a traditional subdivision, it wouldn't work. It would have to be one commonly held lot with multiple housing units on it, which is permitted in um like an MFR district. And then um who is in charge of uh the animals? So the planning and zoning commission in its regulations, and Dr. Clemens has mentioned this in his summation of of making sure that uh the zoning regulations do permit for it seven point two point two ecological considerations. It does list what the planning and zoning commission is supposed to take into consideration when it makes its determinations. Um, it also highs relies heavily on the natural diversity database um in order to, you know, really took, take a look at extraordinarily wildlife, uh nesting, feeding, breeding grounds, things of of that nature. So there is a portion of the property that's not within the open review area that is under the discretion of the planning and zoning commission to review. That's it.
Somebody else mention wells?
Um, whoa. The plan of conservation development has this permitted as a residential zone and therefore if it is subdivided, the applicants and the applicant and the property owners have a right to develop a property with a well. Um, just because someone else's well was first doesn't mean that additional wells cannot be developed on properly zoned parcels. They're not asking for a zone change on this. They're not asking for it to go from uh preexisting open space to a residential development or from a business district to a residential development. This is, you know, the existing zone for the property that was approved as part of the plan of conservation development in twenty twenty.
Thank you. Andrew, nothing. Okay, so I'm gonna ask.
I I sorry, Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of things to add as well.
Go ahead.
All right, so yeah, James de Mayo, um, I I just want to kind of clarify a couple of things. Um, and just listening to the public, I want to make sure that the public understands the roles of of the commission members throughout the process, staff's responsibilities, things like that. Um, I've I've been hearing, you know, some some either accusations or uh misrepresentations of what's happening. For instance, right now, the commission is in a fact finding phase for an application. Um, a lot of a lot of what I was hearing was uh the public saying, oh, well, it seems like all they're doing is talking about how it's going to be, how to make it possible. Right now, they're trying, the the commission is trying to understand the full scope of the application, trying to get it, uh, see if the the applicant can waiver a little bit and and get themselves more comfortable. Um, it doesn't mean that they're in favor or against it at this point. They're just, again, fact finding. Um, I would like to talk about a comment from Mark Lamont. Um, misrep- misrepresenting something I said. Again, I'm the town engineer. I I review applications on their technical merit versus engineering standards, practices, stormwater management, those types of things. So I don't just blindly give everybody. I I I do care what people do on their property, but it has to meet engineering standards. That's what I look at as as a staff. That's my role. Um, I I don't think that people should just clear cut and destroy everything. That's not what I was saying. Um, in terms of the open space and accessibility, I just want one other clarification. Uh, the public would not be able to access it from the road until the road is accepted and turned over to the town. Um, and the open space that's being referred to, most of that area is covered in the conservation easement. However, there is a small pocket of open space in the upper left hand corner. That's that's the open space that was to to remain at this point. So, um, but I just wanted to point out that from the town or from the road, they wouldn't be able to access, the public can't access it until it's accepted and everything else. But that's all I have. Thank you.
So I just have to correct James real quick one point on that. The the open space is thirty percent is an open space easement that we're proposing to now also cover with a conservation easement.
The.
It's not, it's not like the conservation easement is this pocket and then the open space, there's an open space easement. And then what we've proposed in the course of this application is overlaying it with a conservation easement. I know that's.
Yeah, cor- cor- correct. It it's all it's all open space, but the open space that doesn't have the conservation easement.
Yeah.
How much open space is not covered by the conservation?
Sorry.
How much open? I'm sorry, this is Rick Smith. How much open space is not covered by the conservation easement?
I think it's three percent, I three acres, I think, right? Is it a little more than that?
James, just to clarify, you said left side. Are you talking about the southeastern corner by Manor Drive?
The section right.
There's open space.
Total of eighteen acres of open space, thirteen fourteen acres, it's about four acres, Chris is right. So it's thirteen point nine acres of conservation easement out of the total of eighteen acres of open space. So you've got a remainder there of approximately four acres.
Well, my point was, you could actually access it from Manor Drive, though.
You could, yeah.
Yeah, so when it does get subdivided, they could technically access the open space from Manor Drive.
I just want to make that clear because the the, one of the reasons, the nice thing about the the cluster subdivision regulations being discussed, and it's the same as you all are right, is that unlike the conventional subdivision, if we just went in for this solid RF two and RF two subdivision, you only need to designate fifteen percent towards open space. So with the cluster subdivision, it would be thirty percent. And so we're, the open space is covering at the eighteen acres.
It's fifty six percent.
Um, but there is, there's also a conservation easement going. I'm not supposed to.
Right, but just my point, when I'm talking about open space, we need to make sure we're clear about what that means to us as a conservation commission.
Not really.
No.
This application in general.
Don't get to define that.
But but when we say it's open space, I I still don't have.
The town has a definition of open.
And that is not.
Can read it to you again if you.
I requested that it be defined or at least the.
But you read it.
But I think the challenge commissioner then is the PNC has some discretion with regards to that thirty, it's actually thirty seven percent of our site, I think is right, is open split.
Fifty six.
No, fifty six of the the open space is conservation, but of our site, I think.
Fifty six percent of the site is open space.
Okay, all right, all right, there there you go. So you would be taking that out of PNC's hands by doing that.
And as I said, there's really two approvals. There's a there's a subdivision determination, which is you guys writing a report related to your opinions on the subdivision. And then there is the inland wetland regulate, the inland wetland disturbance, which is the application that's, you know, in front of you and based on the discussions with Dr. Clemens, instead of doing a one for one mitigation for the wetlands, the conservation easement is one of the alternatives he gave in order to protect and to mitigate the disturbance that's occurring for the crossing of the road, which is why even though there's no disturbance in that area, that's part of the mitigation process. The open space process is actually part of the subdivision portion of the report. But really, it's the planning and zoning commission that has final determination over what that looks like.
And I just want to add, you know, and I and this gets into some of my final comments, but but Dr. Clutton said in his final summation letter, I believe believe that last night, this was written the night after the uh last hearing, I believe that last night we identified the optimal area for a conservation easement to uh protect the ecological integrity of these hillside seats. So I, the plan that you see was that area we had discussed at the last meeting. So I think we've covered the the area that Dr. Clemens was concerned.
And when we talk about subdivisions as it relates to planning zoning, I will read from the zoning regulations, which is the, there's a portion that it's a pretty large section, but the method of protection is the applicant shall submit with an application the necessary draft proposed map and legal instrument designed to ensure that the designated open space lands shall be preserved in perpetuity. The applicant shall be responsible for any of the filing fees due to the office of the town clerk. So it's basically saying the legal instrument designed to ensure that the designated open space lines shall be preserved in perpetuity. Technically, there's a couple of different ways that legal instrument could be, you know, enacted, which is why it's, you know, it's a little it's a little hard to say. That's why Dr. Clemens had requested, had recommended that a conservation easement be put over it because that's something that this commission has the ability to make sure that that conservation easement is accomplishing the goals of the wetlands, whereas planning and zoning could say, yes, we want it for passive recreation or we don't want any passive recreation on it and that legal instrument needs to have a condition that doesn't, you know, so there's it it is a little bit out of your hands, but what you have under your control is the requirements of the conservation easement.
Okay, so I'm good if it's all conservation easement. But if if we do have open space, Dr. Clemens says uh recreation and other traditional open space uses are not appropriate within the conservation easement where there should be no disturbance, such as tree harvest, spraying of pesticides, da, 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 da. So what I'm saying is, so but what about that open space?
So you should.
We can't define that.
Subdivisions, you should put it. So again, this is, these are two approvals. There's a subdivision report referral from this commission to planning and zoning, which I would recommend that if that's something the commission wants to include in that report, we give that recommendation to the planning and zoning commission that this is what the inland wetland commission recommends. And then two, there's the approval or denial for the work that's being done within the open review area.
So then what I should be asking the commission to do is to agree that it's all conservation easements?
No, I mean, you can, you can say that if you feel like that um that last four acres is part of what you think is required in order to properly mitigate the disturbance of that, that is your obstacle to to deliberate.
What are we trying to get to? Like.
Yeah, my. What I'm trying to get to is I don't want any pesticides or anything used up in that open space area. I I understand and I I was there with my dog. You know, it's possible that that people on Manor Drive might want to take a little walk into the woods, not too far, as long as it's, it's, you know, it's it's understood. I don't, I I, you know, even though Dr. Clemens says, hey, that, you know, no, no animals, no nothing, I get it, but I'm just saying that I want to protect that space specifically, protect the the groundwaterers and 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 what's what's flowing downhill. I don't, I don't want that to be the current dumping ground that it is.
My my recollection of what Dr. Clemens said in in his last appearance was, and I think that 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 aligns with it. He's talking about the conservation easement, which was highlighted, and it's that inside the red.
Right.
The open space from his perspective in that meeting up in the corner was not an area of concern. That's my recollection of 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 what he said in the last meeting. That that elevated space up in the corner was not an area of concern, and that's not the conservation easement as it was defined in that meeting that he was a part of.
Well, it was that red line was moved up and and moved further away from from the wetlands to accommodate his concern that it was too close. So we extended that conservation easement.
So just.
So I I want to make sure I understand correctly. You want that open, the rest of the open space to be, to fall under this conservation easement?
That'd be okay with me because I'm, what I'm concerned about is is the garbage that I so during my site visit afterwards, you know that I I asked for permission to go up into that corner to take a good look at it. What I saw up in that corner was disturbing to a certain degree because there was significant trash uh by the uh Manor Drive. I picked and and I and it was, they were coming through on a garbage run. So I, as you know, I pick up garbage and I put it in the right place. Gasoline cans and and all sorts of just crap that I really don't want in there and I don't think that the the neighbors want in there either. Unfortunately, it gets in there. And and I'm just saying that, you know, it'd be better if it was covered by a conservation easement.
Right, so, okay. Hypothetically, it's now all conservation easement. What's going to prevent whoever's been doing that dumping from going back in?
Well, if if they get caught, then then they can, they they're going to be ticketed.
They're still going to get caught, ticketed. What's that? In open space, you can't dump in open space. So it doesn't, doesn't change anything. I'm I'm trying to get to.
Yeah.
What's that going to prevent or solve or do?
Protect that upper area, which is the height of the.
It's already protected.
Question is, what, from going from open space to conservation, what does that change? I mean, you couldn't do that if it was open spaces. I don't even know what it's.
Well, I don't see any open space reco- um definitions that I've gotten from the town and I I it doesn't say anything about tree harvesting, spraying of pesticides, trails, dumping of of organic materials like leaves and things. It doesn't say anything about garden, garden debris or other uses. It doesn't say that. It doesn't clearly tell me. So what's open space?
So I just want to make it very clear to any resident that's listening. You cannot dump in open space. You cannot dump garbage. The absence of that explicitly written in some sort of covenant does not give you the permission to dump in open space. You cannot dump in any documented open space in the the town of Monroe. So to that effect, you cannot dump in any open space in the town of Monroe. If someone were to do that, we have plenty of of legal action. Plenty of action to do with. Um, the absence of that explicitly called out doesn't permit it.
So what I'm, what I'm saying is, if if someone up in that area was dumping their organic or inorganic waste or whatever on a regular basis and the neighbors were upset about it because they're more conservationists than he than they are, what action do they take? Well, they take, they they try to get inland wetlands or or somebody, not the ranger, but I don't know who it is, but but, you know, to 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 give them a violation, say, hey, you really can't do this. We, this is not, you know, not appropriate.
But they could do that now.
Yeah, you can't dump in open.
Can't dump in open space. So you can do that.
Where is that defined? I I just didn't see.
Subdivision regulations shows it talks about open space, the protection of open space, the point of open space. No, does it say you cannot dump garbage? No, it does not explicitly say that. Um, but it's to protect the land.
Right.
In its current natural form.
Yeah, I think.
Dumping into open space is the opposite of that objective.
I think we're kind of getting um getting away from like the whole intention of the conservation easement, right? But that was because there are those those fingers there, the wetlands. The concept of making that a conservation easement is that nothing can be done in that space, not dumping, but we, the town cannot choose to add pathways.
The walking paths.
People need to go in there. People can't, right? Up above as open space, it's still, it's still open space. You can't dump. You can't do things that you shouldn't be doing in that space, but it could be used. It could be converted into a formal walking path. That that would be acceptable. You could take your dog on the path in that space in the future. That's that's the key difference in my mind.
Right, but right, if we make it a conservation easement, then you won't be able to do any of that.
And that's okay with me, too.
Well, it depends on. You would also be, the thing is too, Commissioner, you would be, we're essentially turning this over to the town, right? I mean, the easement is to the town of Monroe.
Right.
So you would be restricting the town and what it could do there. Um, you know, because I mean, I've seen presentations to commissions to address uh invasives and blight and things like that. And if you were saying things like you couldn't use any type of chemicals that are used to address those invasives, you would be restricting the town from dealing with a problem or anything. You would, you would just be imposing restrictions, not necessarily on us, but on the town itself, on what it could potentially do in the future.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I may. Um, we're we're kind of teetering in the realm of deliberations and not necessarily the fact finding portion of the meeting. Um, I I think an appropriate question for the applicant at this time would be, does the applicant object to the possibility of that section also containing an? does the applicant object to the possibility of that section also containing a conservation easement?
That's a fair question.
And then internally after, in deliberations is when the commission can then discuss it further.
Right, that's fair.
Yeah, I, we don't have any objection to it.
Okay.
I'm a little fearful of, we're going to get to PNC and the PNC is going to be like, wait.
Right.
You know, this, we're supposed to be offered 30% open space, and they have some discretion there, and it's, the entire open space will have a decision will have to be made for it. So that's where my, it doesn't, it's not going to make any difference. It's not like if there's an open space easement rather than a conservation, that we're going to be able to do something different. It's not, it's not our easement, it's the town. But I could see the commission feeling like its hands are tied.
Right, okay. Point taken, all right. Will you move on from that?
Please.
Commissioner Smith, anything else? Okay. Are we ready to deliberate on this? Are we ready to close this? Because it's our last chance to.
And I still have to do my.
Oh, I know. Before we let you do that, I want to make sure we have all of our questions answered. So we're going to, one more time, everybody.
I'm so sorry. James, are you okay if we close the public hearing? Any of your outstanding stuff, are you good to handle?
Yes, I believe that we can handle our stuff with minimal changes to the impacts in the upland review or wetlands.
And as conditions.
If, if that's the direction of the commission and their comfort level. If they're not comfortable, then obviously we continue.
Okay, so, last chance, everybody. Before we give him the floor to make his final comments, are we ready to let, let him make his final comments and make a decision to close this meeting tonight? Go down the line one more time. You're good.
I'm good, Commissioner Fernandez, I'm good.
Commissioner Smith?
Commissioner Smith is fine.
Okay.
Commissioner Sadez is okay.
Commissioner Kelly is?
Okay.
I'm okay.
Stewart is wonderful.
Stewart is okay.
Andrew is fine.
Okay. Consulate.
No objection.
Okay, the floor is your closing statement.
Going through some of the, so sorry for. I just to add, you know, for closing, I want to go over the criteria for decision that's set forth in your regulations. Regarding the environmental impact of the proposed activity on the watercourses, just going down the line. We submitted reports from two experts with regards to burnout pools, and that they are not present on the site. And that finding was accepted by the expert obtained by this commission. No other evidence has been provided as the presence of burnout pools on the site. I know because Dr. Clemens brought it back up in the summation report about the visits to the site, and I think this was the first hearing, and I think we had this discussion, so it's been some time. But we went twice. One was outside that timeframe. The second was within that timeframe that he had wanted us to go visit, I think it was March, right? March, right? And so we did do that. But because I just noticed he mentioned it again in his comments. And I talked about this, you know, a few minutes ago. But we have to bear in mind with this application that all the dwellings and their driveways are located completely out of the upland review area, not just outside the wetlands, outside of the upland review area. If a lot, and as the discussion we had, if somebody came forward, if this were to be approved on a lot and ventured into the upland review area with some type of development in there, they would have to come back to you. I think we demonstrated though that there's a lot of area here on these lots where somebody could build a house, put their driveway outside of the upland review area completely. So really, the regulated activity surrounds the construction of the proposed road. And wetlands crossing is unfortunately sometimes unavoidable, as much as it is sought to be avoided. The town had to have a similar request for tide drive, you know, at the last hearing. It's unfortunate that occurs at the beginning of this site. And this is in a situation where we have access to seven of the proposed lines, and the wetlands crossing is needed to get to the eighth lot. And we could just lop off the eighth lot and we'd still have access to the seven. This crossing is needed before you even get to the first lot proposed in this development. We have provided the most feasible and most prudent alternatives for this crossing, two of them, as we discussed. And those adjectives carry meaning in case law. It's not simply alternatives, it's feasible and prudent alternatives. There will always be a million alternatives, but feasible and prudent alternatives are much more limited. Feasible has been defined as a matter of sound engineering. The applicant has worked extensively on its own and with the town engineer for a culvert design that is soundly engineered. Now, I know there are other types of culverts that can be soundly engineered, but it is feasible and prudent alternative. And prudent has been defined as those which are economically reasonable in light of the social benefits derived from the activity. And the town engineer has stated that the town will not accept or maintain a three-sided culvert or a spin. And we've also now shown that alternative designs, including the side-by-side three-sided culverts, will increase the amount of wetlands to service. But, you know, the applicant hasn't stopped through the course of this application and just taken the position, well, the town will accept a four-sided culvert, so here you go. We have spent weeks working with the town engineer, reviewing comments from the commission and its experts and neighbors, studying other culvert designs around the country, found, reviewed, and submitted culvert studies. We had our own experts review the design to ensure it addressed concerns regarding wildlife. Most of Dr. Clemens' comments surrounded the wildlife, not the wetland. His final letter related mostly to that. His weather discussion, frankly, was mostly confined to expanding the conservation easement, which we've done, and I read his statement from his letter that we designate the optimal area. The applicant has offered a number of measures beyond the culvert design to protect wildlife, including a box turtle protection plan and agreeing to a significant conservation easement, again, which Dr. Clemens was satisfied with, with reverse of the conservation easement. In addition, Dr. Clemens was informed at the last hearing that downstream of the culvert was piped essentially all the way to Lake Sor, or down to the boys' halfway river, I should say, including a pipe with a significant lip. And it's unfortunate Dr. Clemens isn't here, because he had indicated at that last hearing that that would be a significant piece of information for him to review. And he said, I think the words he used was that it would be a different story, essentially. And he said it was an important consideration. One thing, and I appreciate the neighbor's comments with regards to, it's hard to know who has what jurisdiction with regards to wildlife and what case law says. It is very confusing. I do this for a living. It's, it's sometimes tough to parse it out. But I will note in Dr. Clemens' statement, he talked about this. He is pointed to on page one. He talks about wildlife, species of prey, watercourses, and wetlands, and what your review is. You have to look at what it results in the impairment of the wetland resource by atropication, chemical hydrological changes, reduction in water quality, or disruption of the function of the wetland watercourse ecosystem. And any evidence has been submitted that what is being proposed would have such an impairment. Actually, in that, he talks about the Easter box turtle, and he said, the Easter box turtle is a facultative wetland species, and therefore is not an appropriate consideration for the I W M C. And again, we're not, I'm not trying to, we're trying to do whatever we can, and what we've been trying to do for these past few weeks, whatever we can to help the wildlife in this area. You know, again, we submitted a box turtle protection plan. But again, I think it's our client's going above and beyond what the, what's required to try to do whatever you can to respect the environment in this area. The next review is with regards to feasible and prudent alternatives. The applicant has presented a number of alternatives on this project, why some of them do not work. Some of these alternatives would require roadway sightlines that not only do not meet standards, they will be dangerous. And trust me, if the applicant could avoid this crossing, it would save him $10,000, if not more. I think cost estimates of the culvert are north of $100,000. So it would also mean not nearly as much land being restricted by a conservation easement. And it probably would mean more lots if they were able to come from a different location. We actually removed a lot from this plan, if you remember, from the original submissions. But again, we are restrained by the DOT requirements, which we submitted an email to that effect, and then also the restrictions with regards to sightlines, if we, you know, if there was to be an access road off and down the road. So this really is the only location, and again, we have to cross this wetland to get to even the first lot. Not, not just one at the end, to get to this whole subdivision. And again, one of the benefits of this zoning regulation, this cluster subdivision zoning regulation, is that it expands the amount of open space that normally would be provided. If you came in here with a traditional two-acre subdivision that a lot of homes here in Monroe had been built under, you would only have 15% open space required under that. Whereas, which would equate, I think, to 9.3 acres. Whereas with the cluster subdivision, which we're coming under, there's 30%, and we're doing well beyond that 30%, at 56%. So we're going well beyond that. And also, one for all to note, this is getting into zoning regulations, but the cluster subdivision regs would require one acre lots. We're proposing one and a half acre lots. So we're proposing things that are in excess of the regulations required. But I think this plan significantly improved since the original submission, based on the helpful feedback from the commissioner's staff, Dr. Clemens, and the public. And what we have arrived at is what we believe is basically narrowed down to feasible and prudent alternatives. Either the, where the road is located higher, where there's a greater amount of disturbance, but the grade isn't as severe, or the lower alternative where the grade is steeper, but the amount of disturbance is less. The next criteria is with regard to short-term and long-term impacts of the proposed regulated activity. We have submitted plans and our proposed controls with consultation from our two wetlands experts on how we will minimize short-term and long-term impacts from the proposed regulated activity. In addition, for the long term, we have proposed this very large conservation easement, almost 13 acres, over almost all the wetlands, including the most important fingers, as Dr. Clemens had described them. And this easement is in perpetuity. It will be there long after you and I are both gone. So with this application, we're ensuring that this is protected basically forever or until the town of Monroe gives, you know, for some reason removes it. Then the next standard is regarding irreversible and irretrievable loss of wetlands and watercourses resources, which would be caused by the proposed regulated activity. We have reduced our wetland impact with the alternative of shifting the road down toward Monroe Turnpike to where we will only disturb in that version, 1100 square feet? Oh, yeah, roughly 1100 square feet. And we have submitted multiple plans and submitted expert testimony to you regarding the design of this project to prevent and minimize pollution and other environmental damage, maintain environmental quality. And we've actually submitted plans to enhance environmental quality in the area. Regarding the next standard, which is the character and degree of injury to interference with the safety health for the reasonable use of the property, which is caused or threatened by the proposed regulated activity. We have demonstrated that this will not have an impact to surrounding properties. I think the discussion we just had regarding stormwater, where the dwellings are, where the road is, where that's going to go, spoke to that. A lot of our neighbors who spoke are either significantly uphill of this property or on the opposite end of the wetlands, completely outside the regulated area. But we have submitted reports on how this stop design will maintain this wetland, not starve the wetland of water, while ensuring that the balance of the site has sufficient drainage to protect neighboring properties. Regarding next standard, impacts of the proposed regulated activity on wetlands or watercourses outside the area for which is proposed and future activities associated with or currently reasonably related to the proposed regulated activity. Again, as I just stated, we will not have an impact on what's outside the area where we are posting regulated activity. The conservation easement goes well beyond where, you know, where we're even proposing regulated activity. And as has been discussed, there's existing off-site conditions, particularly the piping downstream to Lake Sor that has had more impacts to the wildlife rather than what is proposed by our project. And the last is regarding measures which would mitigate the impact of that aspect of the proposed regulated activity. We propose a number of those measures to mitigate the impact of our activity, not just with regards to the wetlands, but again, also to wildlife, like the box turtle and the saddle mander. So it's a downfall, but just wanted to, on the record, respond to those standards of decision. I certainly understand, you know, the neighbor's comments and their feeling of the area. You know, we all, we all live in subdivisions. We, at some point, unless you were here before the founding of the United States, we all live in subdivisions. I think one of the nice things of what the standards today force us to do is to basically have the discussion that we've had over these few hearings, which is trying to work towards the best plan to minimize the impacts as much as possible. And I think the applicant has shown a concerted effort to try and respond to those comments and keep thinking of ways to improve the application and arrive at what we now have, at least two alternatives on the table, as the best ways we could see at mitigating our impact to the wetlands, which again, you know, if this could have been avoided by the applicant, it would have saved him a lot of time, Mike, there's no doubt. But on this site, they're, in order to access the bulk of the site, you have to cross this wetland. And, you know, we, again, we've endeavored to try our hardest to minimize that impact. I'm happy to answer any additional questions that may add up after that, but otherwise, that's the summation bylaws. Even those guys.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate everybody's time and second of the law.
Last chance, everybody. Unless I'm going to call for a motion. All right, do we have a motion to close?
I will motion to close this public hearing and move to deliberations.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Kelly and a second by Commissioner Stewart. All favor.
Aye.
Just to manage the public's expectations, technically, you could start deliberations tonight. You could move that part of the agenda. I'm assuming we're not going to start deliberations tonight, and we are going to do it at the next meeting, is that? I just don't want anybody to hang around to hear your deliberations.
We have another application. We have other things on the agenda.
All right.
That's the next.
Still, we still have a clock to do that.
You have, we have to, we have.
We have to.
By next month, we have to have a decision.
We have a decision.
In November.
13.
Yep. So maybe staff should draft some motions for us for the next meeting.
We can't.
Can we start deliberation tonight to get a few things for you guys to work on, if we need to?
You absolutely can.
Continue.
So if we do plan on doing this, I just want the public and the applicant and people to know, because some people may want to wait around for it. If we aren't going to do it, I don't want everybody to sit through another public hearing to do it. And per our bylaws, we can't start something new after 11:00. What's the exact wording? Unless facing application deadlines or similar time constraints as defined by the Connecticut state statutes. So I would agree that for this project, that is applicable. However, we do still have an enforcement action where there's a gentleman here, you know, waiting to speak. So just to be conscious of everybody's time.
I would be willing to come back so you get your opinions.
It's not, it's not, and it's not just you.
I will.
I was just going to make a motion, but go ahead. I was going to make a motion because I don't want to start deliberation tonight.
We don't have to.
I don't think we have to make a motion, I think it's just to discuss and so.
I, I was going to make a motion to do deliberation at the next meeting.
We, we don't need to make a motion, it's typically on deliberations now, we get to move to that part of the agenda. The question is, is there going to?
I think we're going to, we've all agreed that we'll probably let this go into the next meeting.
Well, on our end, we already have started an approval into denial, so then we at least have things to talk about.
Okay, that's fair. All right, so then moving on to IWC twenty twenty-four dash zero eight. File number one four nine zero fifty Cambridge Drive, proposed battery storage system within the upland review area and associated utility connections and apparatus. Cambridge Drive R E L L C owner, B L Company's representative. Thank you for your patience. I have to re-discip here. You guys, before, before we jump into this, do we, do we want to take a break?
I think everybody needs a five minute.
Are you guys okay?
I'm sorry.
We need a motion?
We make it just five minutes.
All right, we need a motion or not? All right, five minute resets.
That was used by some other resource prior, prior to this. There are some other standard or stand high trees to the peripheral of the wetland and also upland of this area that are kind of the same stature or height of tree. There are some invasives that occur around it, and we're removing some of those. I think that's the, the, the long and short of it for the tree itself. I do have a couple of photographs. I can either share screen, I don't know if that's possible, I know this is a hearing, and then get them to you. They're on a separate file of some of the findings that we had, or I can just send them along, either or.
We can share your screen.
Hold on one second.
Nope.
All right, you should be a co-host now, you should be able to share.
Okay. I'm not technologically advanced, so I have to find it on here for. Where are recurring view options? Give me one second. Oh, that helps. I just put everything in different spots, hold on a second. There it is. Okay, I'm going to share a screen now, tell me if you guys can see it.
Yep, that's the tree.
That's October second. What I'll draw attention to is obviously the, the dead or dying leaders, which we know are commonplace on an oak. However, they are more prevalent on some of these leaders. And what, what I'm paying more attention to is, is the, the branchlets, the branch out and the stems as it's going to try to provide development on the tree itself. That's the actual trunk of the tree, that's where I'm calling the question approximately. You know, it's, I think it's a little less than thirty-six, but that's splitting hairs. Just wanted to make you aware of that in terms of its vigor. This is again, these examples where we're getting a lot of die-off on the limbs themselves. And in terms of turnback on those leaf, leaf memberships of themselves. And then I think I've got one in here where we found some remnants here. We've got some, some definite signs of, of not decay, but the boring element right in here. Ignore that, that's just a cricket, he kind of will hang on for the ride, but that's not, that's not one of the actual culprits or one of the people that are trying to compensate that area. And then we've got another example, we're in a different one that fell off on the other side. So we're looking at those areas, and then I've got a third option here. And then we're looking at again, so we can kind of see where we're looking and the way it leans back towards some. I'm standing over on, actually Gareth took this picture, he's standing over off the area. The roadway comes in, so you can see that there's some, some decline in the area. I can forward these along, I want to make sure that you get them. So afterwards, we can, we can start sharing somehow. Not sure how I do that. You guys see it?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
And then lastly, would be Jeremy Smith from Waldron. Here's the electric engineer, also the installing list. Just talk a bit about the electric safety technology and what it actually is.
Excellent, thank you, Jeremy Smith, Waldron Engineering, professional engineer licensed in the state of Connecticut. We represent the electrical engineer, we're also a premium installer with Tesla. The system is an advanced lithium iron phosphate system, which is a, a, used to store and return the energy to the electrical grid and to the local customer. And the systems do have an HVAC component. They're breathing air in from the front and dispelling it up from the top. The top of the unit is also where we have anti-deflagration systems, which protect accumulation of gases in event, extremely unlikely event of a thermal event. So the top of the unit is particularly of importance to us, which is why we would have that concern of overhanging limbs being in a degraded condition.
Okay, thank you. So in, in short, for you seeing, because we're working in that one review area, there's no works within the wetlands, there's no disturbance off the wetlands itself. A lot of the, the corridor, if I could share my screen again, that's. Help. So the closest up proximity to actual ground disturbance is this pole position here. And we're overhead, I did mention before that there will be some limbs, there's some lower shrubs here, which I feel is fat across okay. And then some sapling trees here that, that some of the branches may need trimmed just to pull in itself. Again, we, we looked at this in great detail. It's a rare dry eye, you know, layers of agri. So trenching through that, there just seemed to be asking for a wider and wider trenching when we get in a drive out. So going overhead seemed to be the, the best approach to, but then reduce the risk of any damage to wetlands. So hopefully you can see what we're trying to do here. Originally, we did have the best unit back along here when it came to the triad. Or formed that actually the wetland records here might not be that accurate. So we went out, so everybody did, and it was true that the wetlands did extend further than initially thought. Therefore, we moved the best unit further away. You know, restricted in how far we can actually move the best unit from the rest of the apparatus just for a loss of electricity and efficiency for the whole system. And the tree at the time was living fairly dead, and everything else was starting to grow. Obviously, John gives, you know, gives a lot more detail on that than me. So hopefully, we've addressed this double risk than in the previous meeting and on the sidewalk a few several weeks ago. Do you measure it in a little bit?
No, I'm just checking, it's forty-seven feet, over forty-four seven feet away from the wetlands, is what I'm correct?
Yes, the best unit is forty-seven feet away from the wetlands. The pole is twenty-two there.
Um, and just to provide additional clarification, he had mentioned a pre-application meeting. The applicant did come in and met with basically all of town staff. So well-ins planning and zoning, the fire marshal, the building inspector, and the town engineer, just to make sure the viability of it, you know, all sort of code standpoints.
I have a couple of questions.
Right ahead.
So fire department, great that you met with the marshal, you know, you need your training. And so what is, what, okay, so God forbid there is a thermal event in the middle of the night. I have two questions. One is with regard to your remote monitoring, and we'll talk about that in a second. But the, the first thing is, what are the, what are the firemen, is there anything that they have or can access quickly to say, okay, this is how we deal with this thermal event?
Hi, Mr. Smith, I'm David Green from R W D, I'm a fire protection, also a deputy chief of special operations in Department County. So I run the hazmat team, I'm going to deal with this quite often. At least the planning of it, I can't say if we run to fires because we have them, but we do a lot of planning for it. So we're going to develop emergency services response plan specific to the local fire department, local EMS, local nine-one-one, and we do this everywhere we build. So we sit down, wait before the batteries even arrive on site, and then we do the training to ensure that the fire department understands the scope of the response in the event there is a thermal condition with the batteries. So to answer your question, we provide the tools within the plan so they understand how to respond to it and what's expected about. They're not expected to go inside the enclosure. Their, their single expectation is protect any life and property outside of that. Be no different if the, if the ever source substation would catch fire or a transformer adjacent to a building. The fire department, whether you're paid, volunteer, combination, we're not going in and dealing with that, having, you know, power down. So what happens, Commissioner Smith?
Can I, can I just, what?
Yeah. I just want to make sure. Yeah.
This is not an inland wetland thing, because this is something that they're dealing with the fire marshal, so.
I just want to make sure that the fire marshal is going to accept the ERP, that's all, that's all I want.
That's our concern. It, it's out of our scope, so I appreciate what you're asking, but if you're, if you want to ask on an inland wetland related matter, great, then ask it, but ask it about fuck.
What do you say on a half feet away from the wetlands?
I understand, so the question should be, what are you going to do to protect the wetlands in the event that there's a fire? That's the question, not have you spoken to the fire marshal? So I want to understand.
I just want the fire marshal to be a part of the ERP, that's all.
And that's fine, but we're getting so deep into the weeds that beyond our, it's ten minutes to eleven. We, we got to, we got to move.
I'm sorry, I have as much to do tonight as anybody.
Exactly, so, but we got to stick, stay on topic here, that's all.
I am on topic, sir.
Okay, enough.
Assuming the fireworks and the fire chief are required to sign off on the plan. This is not my signature.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's, that's how, thank you. Uh, I have a second question about the remote monitoring. So there are alarms on, on the remote monitoring?
Yes, sir, there's no, there's no audible alarms.
No, but the fire department will know.
So, so two things will happen. One, internally, we're monitoring at twenty-four seven. So that goes to our, throughout what they call scan, so we're monitoring all the time. Secondly, there'll be fire alarm system that meets the fire marshal's sign off at a P seventy-two. And that will go out like it would from your home or the business. And so that's being monitored as well, and they will respond appropriately based on the alarm they receive.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Any other summary questions?
Yes, sir. Yes, solid state, anything leak out of these things?
Uh, Jeremy Smith again, for the, on behalf of the manufacturer and the electrical engineering. These do not have free electrolyte, there's nothing to leak out from the battery module.
Okay, great. The other question would be, why all the way over there? I mean, seems like you got a lot of grass around the building, parking lot, why so far away?
This was, this was agreed upon with the property owner, the building owner. As you know, there's a facility there, Axol Plastics. So the building owner did not want any impact, any interference with operations. And so, and the other factor is, we need to be able to connect to the existing battery in the building. So those combination of factors told us that this was the best location.
So there's no reason why it couldn't be closer, it's not a fire. It's got to be a thousand feet from a building or something.
No, and, and the other factor was, he didn't really want us to go in and, and start clearing out an area. This was already cleared, there was access to it, it was open. So we didn't have to go in and cut trees and build a pad. That area was open.
Okay, is he, what, has he got solar power? Means he?
He does have solar.
Okay, so this is his storage for his solar power to, to decrease his peak demand sort of thing?
No, it's, it's really for the building owner. In the event he needs emergency power, loss of power.
He can stay in business, okay.
He, he can keep going.
And as it relates to the location, and I'm projecting, because again, this is technology that I'm not a super understanding of, like, our fire marshal doesn't want EV, like, charging stations too close to the building, because if they were to catch on fire, it's, you know, a fire that's almost impossible to put out. Is that the same kind of concept here? Is if this does catch on fire, it's a fire that's a?
Well, we, 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 so all of the design, regardless of what the local code is, we build everything under P eighty-five, which gives us the setbacks.
Yeah.
This is a brand new version, this one twenty-three. So it gives us the setbacks required based on the size of the battery. So based on the energy, it'll, it'll give you the setbacks.
From a building?
From a build, from anything.
Okay.
From parking lot, building.
Yeah.
You know, a driveway, an aisle way.
So do you know what it is on this?
Well.
Like, what's the requirement of a setback from a building?
Much less than this, right? Because I do have.
Ten feet.
But that's it. You know, I'm just trying to understand it in relationship to a location of it and then.
Yeah, so we, we could build it like code, within ten feet of the building.
Yeah.
But we, we won't.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think that.
It makes it very difficult to maintain at ten feet from a building.
It, it does, so I've got some experience in, in, in installing a megawatt worth of generation. A little bit of a different technology. But so that was a great question, because it is quite a distance. So I mean, if that's, you know, what's desired, I guess that's what's desired, but it could be much closer. My real question though is, as it relates to wetlands, the pad that the twenty-nine foot structure sits on, you say it sits on a concrete pad, right? What's underneath the concrete pad? Is it gravel, is it dirt, what's underneath that concrete pad? I may have missed it.
It is a, it's big gravel.
Big gravel, okay, okay, like three-quarter inch stones.
Uh, detail.
It's typically what's required even for like a house generation.
It's no difference.
Okay, so I just wanted to.
Uh, you should also be aware, the, the, the ground that it'll be built on right now, I mean, it's, it's upland review area, but it is existing gravel from the previous owner. It was a plant nursery, so it's pretty hard compacted gravel to, to begin with.
Okay, yeah, I haven't seen the site, but I think that answers my question. Thank you.
And I know you addressed earlier, I have a question about the, the utility poles that you're going to use rather than the trench. Did you explore trenching it the whole way? I'm just, because I know now you're going to have to go and trim some trees and maybe some bushes, and I just want to make sure we understand completely why you opted against the trench versus the.
Just, it's a rare, uh, a rare dry eye, which stove stone, compact gravel, various layers, definitely top surface. Excavating through that would be very difficult, you know, you're not talking small size. I'd be ready to talk in larger or larger rock, older size at some base. You don't want to be trying to dig through that, and then your trench becomes larger and larger. And end up, you end up taking up nearly the, nearly the tower width by constructing this trench. It's like, by doing that, then you're pushing your erosion control measures out to the very limits. And then it just asks for a lot more complexity and trouble to get across time as well. So by sticking up the poles, it's a lot neater, cleaner. And with the branches that we're talking about are much smaller bushes, shrubs, and a few small sapling trees as well.
Do you have a photo from like that, just like shooting down that, that driveway area, just so we can see?
So this is the drive out here, so the posts will be going in just around here. There's two smaller trees here, you can see the posts have been up, and then spanning across, it's actually just for an angle in this area, and then dropping down over the, instead of pump up together, dropping down the other side, twenty-two feet away from the wetlands. Pass, what is to be, so we're moving back.
Minimal tree work to.
Oh, minimal, yeah, I'm just doing, that's what we're doing. The trees are on the, you know, the boundary of the wetlands, they're not in the wetlands. And we're taking them out.
Yeah, no, picture helps.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from anybody else?
Any points and comments?
Yeah, so the tree in question, the, the, the large tree there, so that is, I, I agree with the assessment of the tree, and that it is in a state of decline. But I think it was a little deceiving that it's on its way out. I think it's got many years left in it. It is in a state of decline, it is a significant tree. I had asked to mitigate that with, with adding additional plantings to compensate for that tree, in which case you suggested, you know, three dogwood trees to. tree, in which case you suggested, you know, three dogwood trees to replace an oak tree. So I don't know that that's really appropriate. I do see why that tree would need to go in order to put this, if that's the location that you have to put it in. I'm just wondering, if we moved, if you moved the location of the pad further to the right, does that tree really need to come out?
Move it further to the right, we start cutting across the drive out through that land as well. One.
Like, go back to that picture right there, down the driveway?
Mm-hmm.
If that pad was located just directly?
In front of it.
In front of it, instead of going to the left, hooking to the left, you could avoid taking that tree out. It does have a significant purpose for being there, you know, other than, other than just being an oak tree and having the acorns that feed the animals. You know, if it does have a, if it does have a bore in it, that's good for not the tree, but for the whole ecosystem that's there.
So part of it is, obviously, this is a, this entire area is a gravel bed. It's overgrown and has been for some time.
Yeah.
The real discussion with the homeowner, sorry, the landowner about this, if he ever wants to expand here in Monroe, he will be developing into the loading bays and potentially parking lot. I would like to move parking to this area here. So I keep a clear run through the drive out through here as being always in our attention. So if we start looking at switching sides, you know, we start to hit a few other trees, smaller, but there's more multitude of those. This side, we're still close to the wetlands. We don't want to move more to the left, get into more of the wetlands there again, and then moving further north. Again, there's a few scattering of trees, a little smaller, but looking healthier. We can just keep moving further and further away. And then in the future, if he wants to do a parking lot in that area, we're putting it by center of it. So if you want it tucked away as much as possible in here, obviously with the wetlands, that's not possible. So hence moving it forward, forward with it.
We had quite a bit of negotiation with the landowner and as Gareth mentioned, we actually had it closer to the wetlands previously to give him, he wanted as much area to use in the future for different purposes. So then we had to go back to him and do some more negotiating about moving it back into the area that he thought he was going to have. So I think he would be reluctant, to be honest with you, to have us move further back, further to the, to the right at this point. I think that would be a tough, a tough discussion with him.
Okay. And if that is the case, then perhaps some eek type trees would be appropriate.
Just to say, yeah, can we do under quality trees?
Well, or replace an oak with an oak.
Yeah.
Because an oak is a beneficial tree, so.
You're not banning dogwoods?
No, no, no. I want, I want to leave the dogwoods.
In addition to that.
I want to leave, I want to leave the dogwoods because that takes, that compensates for all the other shrubs and other vegetation that has to come out of there. So let's leave the three dogwoods, but let's add three oak trees outside the area where it's not going to get in the way of the batteries. I understand you don't want limbs hanging over there. It's a pretty big area. So where you're proposing the silky dogwoods, that's fine. And could we add three oak trees further away and have those trees planted by hand? Have them small enough that you can do it by hand and not disturb more?
Smaller caliber then?
Yeah. Two-inch caliber tree.
Two-inch, okay.
Sorry, three and a half for the zoning regulations.
Three to three and a half as per zoning regulations.
Yeah. I'm looking to change it.
They have, currently they have to be three to three and a half.
You can't plant a tree unless it's three and a half.
Not as a seduous tree.
Oh, Jesus.
These trees, whether they're three and a half or whether they're 20 feet, dogwoods and oak, in a matter of years, they're going to be almost as tall as a tree that's there.
Yeah. If I could say, so we did talk to Steve Shatman. He doesn't want the plant manage, he doesn't want it over in the corner that we all want. But with regard to the tree, that tree, even with a growth factor of three, is over 100 years old. I think Jeremy said that, or one of the gentlemen said it was, I would say it was at least 100 years old, despite the fact that it's, it's got disease. It's, 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 it has a significant effect on the uptake of water from the, from the nearby wetlands, wetlands. So that's why we're concerned. Limbs. The question was, can it be pruned and maintained? And the answer is not really because the danger really is the limbs falling and creating a problem. So if we're going to cut this tree down, I'm suggesting that these new trees get further away, so it'll never be a problem.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I look at that picture and that tree is in decline and not, in my opinion, not worth, not worth keeping.
I like the idea of adding a couple more oaks a little further away. Makes sense.
Is it that way?
Say it again?
This tree is in decline. By, by taking it down and putting three new trees in in its place, aren't we bettering the environment for a longer period of time?
The answer is yes, and that's why I'm suggesting.
I think it's pretty straightforward.
Yeah. I have no problem with taking out, no problem with taking out the tree. I think it's, I think it's a good call.
Yeah. So if we can add three oaks to it, I think that's a reasonable ask. Okay. Anything else?
You have to read the exhibit.
Oh, I have to read the exhibit. Dr. Dr. Exhibit number one is the application and plan set received on 8/7 of 24 by BL Companies. Exhibit number two is the aquarium mail receipt, again by BL Companies, and that was 8/26 of 24. Exhibit number three is the preliminary review by me, Andrew Brodmann, dated 9/4 of 24. Exhibit number four was response to comments, which BL Companies responded to the comments on 9/11/2024. Exhibit number five were the site walk minutes presented by Rick Smith, dated 9/16/24. Exhibit number six was the certified mail receipts from BL Companies that is dated 9/24/24. Exhibit number seven is a public hearing signage where they presented the, right, posting the signs, again by BL Companies, 9/26 of 24. And exhibit number eight is the engineer's comments and the bond form by James DeMayo, dated 10/8/2024. Those are the exhibits.
And I think they submitted something else this afternoon, we just haven't.
Anything else from anybody?
Gallery?
Yes, one heat.
Good point. Love your passion for the, for the.
I think, I think they're all there.
We spoke about, and there was a lot of invasive species out on the lot, but did you have a note about how you're going to get rid of invasive species?
We did have a note, and then Jeremy as well, who can address that by the techniques, the physical, all the business in the area.
Yeah, we're going to use hand tools, no pesticides to clear only what we need to.
Great. And that's stated in your landscape notes?
It should be, yes.
Okay, just, just making sure it's in there. Great. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Let's move this to the public comments. So anybody in the gallery would like to make a comment?
Hey, girl.
Oh, no.
I'm sick. Any longer than I have to these. Cliff Cuzio, 68 East Village Road. A little bit of knowledge about this because I'm in IT, global IT. We look at mega packs for supplying power to like Fis as well, data centers, Viacom. I've worked on some of those. Some interesting facts. I want to answer one question, get to Rick's point really quick, three things. The reason why it's not 10 feet from that building, there are two fire mega packs that caught fire that are reported and on in study. California is one, Australia the other. California took almost 3,000 gallons of water just to try and get it under control. Australia learned from that and let it burn all night and dead. They had to leave the fire department there because lithium can reignite. So here's what you got to think about. When you ask what's underneath that, I like to see a 3,000 gallon retaining thing like an emergency pull off for trucks where they have carcinogens and things like down at Greenwich. Because when that thing starts burning, if you're going to dump 3,000 gallons of water on it from 47 feet away, I guess where all that stuff's going to go for 24 hours. And then when you're wetlands. Secondly, if you let it burn, it's still going to go into the wetlands. So it just sounds food for thought. I'm not against it, I'm not for it, but that's information about why it's not 10 feet from the building. The other thing is, there's no known published report on the EMF that is given off by a mega pack, only an EM on the car. So they're not sure what the radiation is on a mega pack with 10 feet from the building that's got to burn for 24 hours. I wouldn't want it 10 feet from my building here. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to get somebody else in the gallery. Anybody online would like to?
Who can address that?
Hold on one second. Is there anybody else online who wants to make a comment? Okay. Feel free to.
Jeremy, you want to start or you want me to?
Yep. You're the client, David.
Okay. I just, just to address it, David Rains with RWE. Just two, two things I just want to address with the comments from me. First of all, we're not going to put a gallon of water on this if there's a fire. Only water that would never be dispersed to minimize the potential brush fire or an exposure. God forbid something happened, there was personnel that had to be rescued. And again, in my 12 years doing this, we haven't had that happen. Yes, there has been battery storage fires. There have not been battery storage fires with the equipment, and I'll tell it Jeremy speaks, but do you put them, we're proposing? Okay, there's, there's one in Escanito, California, a few weeks ago. That was a GE 10-year-old battery system. The ones in Australia were about these batteries. Okay, so this is the newest generation of Tesla's system. So what it's going to really do is melt now. It's going to melt down, self-consume. Yes, the fire department in the event, unlikely event it fails, we will have somebody from the fire department and from RWE standing by. We're not, we're not throwing water into wetlands. We're not going to, not going to do that. What happens when a Tesla car inside the road? I can't speak to what the fire department chooses to do. Totally different scenario. Jeremy, do you have anything to add?
Just that the gentleman brought up Australia, some facts about that. That unit did self-consume over a 24-hour period, and it cosmetically damaged the unit next to it. It was about six inches away. The unit directly behind it, that was nine and three-quarter inches away from the unit that was fully consumed, was undamaged and placed into service two days later. So yes, that, these are dangerous to technology if you don't respect it, you don't design it well, install it well, but these dangers can be mitigated.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other public comments? No more public comments. Okay. Do we have a motion to?
Motion to close the public hearing? Who made the motion?
Motion by Mr. Stewart to close the public hearing. Do we have a second? We have a second by Commissioner Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Any? Okay.
It is 11:10. I suggest that we table everything with the exception of 68 East Village, which is an enforcement matter that the owner is here to discuss. However, I would ask for a motion to move 68 East Village Road to the current portion of the agenda.
Motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Stewart to move 68 East Village to the forefront of the agenda.
I'll second that motion.
And a second by Commissioner Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay.
Do you have a question?
This is a question. When do we expect to have?
We will deliberate in our next meeting.
Yeah.
Speak to me this week.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your patience tonight.
And I did, and sorry, I guess I, they did talk to somebody at BL Companies today. You guys don't need the wetlands approval in order to submit to planning and zoning. If you want to submit to planning and zoning, they just give it approved until wetlands approves. So you don't want that to delay that. Obviously, that's a risk of in case they change the site plan or do something like that, but technically you can submit to planning and zoning.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Take care again.
Okay, so we're going to move down to enforcement of 68 Village Road, filling in a potential wetline with gravel and process to create parking area adjacent to the.
So the. Do you want to start or do you want me to start?
So 68 East Village Road, there was a, there were millings and/or gravel that has been deposited at the edge of the town road to create a parking area and appears to be in wetlands. The owner, Cliff Cuzio, is here. So.
In response to a notice of violation.
In response to, right. I issued a notice of violation because there was a parking area created off of a town road, and it goes into what I think is potential wetlands.
Yeah, and I'm just, I wouldn't necessarily call it a parking area. It's a, it's a highway work permit. So you guys should all have this at your desks. This is a timeline, and I gave you a copy as well. 68 East Village Road, this is, you know, for, for our use, starts back in December 4th of, that should be 2023. I will correct that on my copy of 2023. So the way, I can't. I can, can you jump up to the computer? Can we just go onto GIS and actually show the property? So 68 East Village Road is a property that is bisected by a driveway that serves 66 East Village Road in the rear, and then there are wetlands on the property. The western portion of the wetlands has been delineated, or there's a general idea of where that goes to, but the eastern portion of the site has never been delineated. The applicant has a garage that is off of the driveway and has always been in discussions with the town about potentially moving that garage to the other side of the wetlands. In order to have access to that, he applied for a street opening permit with the Department of Public Works. He was granted a street opening permit with the Department of Public Works in April of 2024. Although the plans that are shown, and I did include a copy of the application in this packet of the original highway work permit that has everything that we have on the record, although plans that were shown as part of a highway work permit shows work not only within the public right of way but on private property, the Department of Public Works only has the authority to grant you permission to do work in the public right of way. And the public right of way is defined as the edge of the road to the edge of the property line. According to the town records, we don't have anything exact, but we believe it's around 18 feet plus or minus. There is a stone wall that is located within that area, and there's a picture of that. We know that the stone wall is generally within, is generally within the right of way, and we can use that basically as a, as a point of, of a benchmark for the site. So in that application, it agrees that it's, the applicant has to agree to all the conditions in the local ordinance, and the local ordinance specifically talks about the Department of Public Works as the town's public hideaways, right of ways, easements, and other public properties. After the work was conducted, the town received a complaint from an adjacent neighbor that the work was done not only in the public right of way but past the public right of way, which is on private property and technically within a potential wetland and/or upland review area. At that time, a site visit was conducted by Thomas Noonan, who was at that time was the acting wetland enforcement officer, zoning enforcement officer, and James DeMayo from the town engineer from the town of Monroe, at which time it was determined that work from the town engineer from the town of Monroe, at which time it was determined that work and disturbance was done past that public right of way. However, because we knew that the applicant was looking to, that the owner was looking to potentially move that garage onto the other side, the discussion was, instead of issuing a formal violation, you know, come back with a wetland soil scientist report, the work you want to do on that side, and we could kind of do that entire application together. He could come to the inland wetland commission and both potentially remediate, which may have been nothing, you know, if the commission deemed that that work to be appropriate from that highway work permit, street opening area, or there would be remediation that was done as part of that. We went through the summer discussing when that would occur. The owner provided a proposal from a wetland soil scientist, from Bill Kenny and Associates. However, we did not receive any additional soil scientist report by the end of the summer, and that is when a request for voluntary compliance was issued in August 14th of 2024. And then the violation letter was issued in September 16th of 2024, and the applicant was requested to come to tonight's inland wetland meeting to discuss potential remediations with the inland wetland commission. And at that point, I think it's appropriate to let the owner speak.
Clifford Cuzio, representing Clifford and Susie Cuzio, 68 East Village Road. Hello, James. Thank you for, two things, Kathleen, thank you for explaining that it wasn't a parking area. I appreciate that. And thank you for also bringing up that this is something that moved back 20 years ago, just the 32nd history. I wanted to cross that stream to those other three acres of my property 20 years ago and gentleman Scott, who was the town engineer, said, yeah, not in your lifetime, you can't. I learned everything tonight why you can't cross a stream in the town of Curragh, so it made sense. Well, I learned everything tonight I should have known 20 years ago. So I was offered opportunity to do a street opening at the corner of my property, and I'm not sure if everybody has in front of them, the flat that shows the area, you have this in there? Shows the corner, abutting the neighbor's property at the property line and the telephone pole, and the amount of area I went in with my permit. Due to health reasons, I didn't get off my ground in 2014, 2015. I had bone issues, I had my hips replaced in '14, and I recovered from that. And in the last five years, I had shoulder bone on bone, so I spent the last 28 months in surgeries and rehab. So I decided, hey, I'm healthy now, I'm outside, my yard, like my six acres looks like a shit house, excuse me. I'm trying to, so I started to pursue the thing I started 20 years ago. That's how we're here today. So I just want to quickly get to some points before I ask my question to the commission. I went in and met James with my plan that I wanted to restart this, getting this street opening up on the other side of the property. I probably went in there no less than six times, talked to James Viana, I think that's her name. And two of those times, I sat at the table with James, who brought Thomas Noonan, who liked the time was inland wetlands interim. And some things about the plan, we went over together, we had drawings, I showed him what I want to do, there was a culvert that was there, there was a pipe that was needed, and twice met with James and Thomas, and there was a suggestion he made, hey, listen, extend the culvert to the next driveway and just fill it so there's no hole between these two openings and make it one flat area because the mailbox for the neighbor is like right there. And it was, it was a steep drop there because it goes level all the way back. It's ground level with the neighbor's grass. I actually have grass along that property like the neighbor cuts for me, and that's where that open goes into. So when you talk about the contractor went in and we went beyond the wall, all he basically did was he just, on the left side is 26 feet, and he went in 30 feet, 31 feet up there where, because he just bet with the, there was a huge thorn bush still there. I don't have it over in here, but it's just still overgrown. So, but he went in there and it just meets where the grass, you know, four feet away, it's the same level. So I think what he was doing was just leveling out to what was there with the gravel he had. I met with James at least six times, probably called him a dozen times. He made it very clear we had to follow very stringent Monroe zoning and regulations. I went through three contractors, two of which didn't agree with your regulations, so I didn't hire them. I told him I want to stick to what passed the habit. I was approached by a contractor, he said he understood, he could do it. I hired him, he went in to file up permits, I found out he also works for the town of Monroe, called James mean and said, do we have a conflict, do we need another contractor? He said, no, you don't have a problem with that. I was out there every step of the way. This, he measured everything, he measured depth, he measured pipe, gravel he brought in, he covered the gravel, we used the gravel that we were told to use over the pipe, the depth that we needed to the wall. He may have went to the right side and just met the land, rather than just have be a wall drop off because again, now I have a hazard. I'm not sure what his reason was, but he measured everything. James and Thomas took a trip to the site, as Kathleen said. Here's my question. The number of times I sat with Thomas, the site visit, when the work was completed, I was not told that I exceeded the limitations. The permit granted was for 30 feet from the road. As the homeowner, that's all I know, I have a permit for 30 feet. The other regulations, Thomas had every opportunity to say, Cliff, you can't go beyond that wall. Or while he was there, while I had the equipment there, and he met with my contractor, that was the time to say, listen, pull back two feet of that gravel over the wall, I have the equipment there. Not, because I called, I found out from my contractor that there was a site inspection. So I called him in and asked James, do I have a problem? And he said, no, you're good. After that, when this issue came up, my contractor met with the selectmen and he was told that we're good. So, and she's right, there was a second phase to this. There it is from William Kenny, there's a contract they were committed to a soil engineering for me because my delineation is 25 years old. So the flaggers that are in my original plot, they want to confirm, make sure that I'm not approaching on wetlands, even though it's the same level as the neighbor's yard over there. My question is, with all those opportunities to come and tell me at that time, especially the equipment there, you got to remediate now, you went too far. Why are we doing it now? After the work was done and the city was there and looked at it, I don't mind that she wants it, but I got to get a piece of equipment there. Again, now, I wasn't the contractor. We followed the regulations, we met the 20, 30 feet. The wall, yes, there is a wall there. We may approach the wall on the left side by a couple of feet, but the right side, I think he just took the excess of gravel because we filled the corner like they asked us. So he made it level with the land there. So again, the question I have is, why did we wait till now to tell me I got to remediate? Why didn't you say it at the site when I had the head of wetlands standing there, looking at it, scratching his head? And I get it, because we think you're going through another phase, well, but I still, but the second phase has nothing to do with that. What if the soil engineer says, oh, you can't, you can't put gravel there? I would have liked to have had the opportunity to pull that gravel back that four feet while I had the equipment there. Or be told that, well, you are over cliff, but, you know, because I'm the guy who plays it safe. I would have said, no, no. Pull the gravel back now. If we get approval, we'll push it back forward. Because I went over this many times with James and Thomas, said, you cannot go in there without wetlands approval. You can only go here and you got to stop. So we went to where we thought we could go, 30 feet, and we stopped. Now, obviously, there's a regulation on it. Thomas should have said, Cliff, there's a regulation, you can't go past that wall. He was at the site. So my question is, why now? I will remediate if I'm told to, but I haven't touched that. There's four feet of grass growing there. I haven't touched it. And the reason why I haven't brought the $1,000 engineer in is because I was given a cease and desist and I'm in violation. So I'm not going to continue a project. At the same time, I got hit with another violation, the mobile pilot bricks and some other things that the state never complained about that were on the other side of the need. So I'm fighting all of these violations. I'm not going to start another firefight bringing a soil engineer in. I need to get everything cleaned up, knowing that I'm good to go, I'm in good grace with you people, and now I'm going to get the soil engineer coming. But right now, it's on hold because I'm in violation. I'm not going to continue a project that's a violation. That's all I have. Thank you. James, did I say anything out of character? Sleeping. Thank you. Thank you, Kathleen.
No, not sleeping yet. No, nothing majorly out of character. Yeah, nothing majorly out of character. The only thing would be that all of, pretty much all of our discussions were, like the six times that you and I spoke were mainly about the, that pipe in the culvert crossing and extending the pipe from the neighbor's property and not creating a hazardous situation within the right of way. I don't believe you and I ever talked about anything beyond the right of way or extending or anything like that. That was, that was the main focus, the type of pipe, the size of pipe, how the connections were going to be made, a lot of those conversations. But that's, that's all I have, aside from what Kathleen and you have mentioned.
And I need cooperate and make the larger pipe and make the extension and put the extra gravel on top of the pile with all the regulations standards of weight bearing, right?
Yeah, in regards to the work that was done within the right of way, I have no, no problems in regards to that permit.
The only reason I asked you that.
The only thing that's left is, is to pave, but that was advised, that was the one thing I did advise you to hold off on because of the wetland concerns. But that, that's all that I have to add, that's.
Thanks, James. The only reason I asked you that was I complied, right? I made sure I was complying with what you were requesting of. Thomas, who we did meet with twice, had an opportunity to tell me, like, yeah, let me go out and check that 30 feet, Cliff. And when he was there with you, he had the opportunity to tell my contractor, you need to pull back 10, 5, 6, 7 feet of that gravel right now. Correct?
I'm not going to speak for somebody else.
Okay.
So.
But you're right, you, yes, I do, I will say that you did tell me, do not go beyond what you're allowed to with wetlands. You did warn me that many times, and I thought I was in compliance with that right now. So, thank you.
All right, so you've been out there to see it.
Yeah.
So give me your take based on everything we've just heard, what the situation is and what we need to do to get it.
Okay.
And just to support whatever your narrative is, there was a picture that Andrew took in a sketch that Andrew created from his site visit at you.
Why was this, why was this done? I didn't figure it out why, why?
The property on the other side of a stream about 25 years ago.
Do you want to point to?
And I wanted to, I wanted to.
So right over here, there's a stream. This is all, this is all potential wetlands up in here.
Yeah.
East Village Road runs down this way.
Yeah.
And the pullout or whatever you want to call it, the parking area, the pullout, whatever it is, is right about in there.
So you were, you're starting to create an area to get into your upper?
Yeah, because I started to clear this. We had a storm 20, 40 years ago, and I started to clear it by having to change, because the stream got blocked by trees that came down and other things. And somebody complained, and then I got called in for violating, okay? So I said, no, no, I'm not using, I'm doing it by hand. So long as you do it by hand, you can clear the stream. I said, can I, I want to cross.
So you could see, you could see all of that purple, that's, that's all your potential wetlands.
Down in here, I'd like to cross the stream. Could I bridge to the footbridge or?
Where's the driveway, right on?
So the pullout that we're talking about, the area that we're talking about?
It's in that area.
Here.
It's 25 feet from this, this is the property line?
Yes.
It's driveway for the neighbors right here, and I have grass, I have grass here and it's pretty level all the way back.
We just, we just use the phrase potentially wetlands, but everything that I've experienced in my two years here, the wetlands are defined.
No. No, it has to be, it has to be delineated by a soil scientist. I could tell you from what I see, I'm going to, I'll put myself out there and say that this is all wetlands down here.
So when we talk about GIS, when we talk about the purple soils, the purple layer, it's potential wetland soils, it takes the data from a soil map and puts it on. Town of Monroe also has a very old wetlands map that has some information on it. So when we get into these situations, until a soil scientist actually goes out and delineate it, we don't actually know what's through wetlands and what's up in review areas, so we generally refer to it as potential wetlands.
Just, so I, I don't know if you can see this, this is half of the flat. Here's the easement, here's the stream. This dotted line is from my $3,000 engineer flat from a company in, we're in Fairfield now, but 24 years ago, that was their delineated wetland flagged on my flat. Obviously now, soil engineering, it's different, this is 25 years old, so you can see why I'm like, you know, 24 years, I want to use that. If that's my wetlands, I can probably go in there.
There's the other side.
Yeah. So I tried to cross the stream and Scott stopped. Said, no, no, if you want to get to it, you got to go in from the road. Because of health issues and other things, I never got to it. So now I'm trying to get to it. So I'm slow rolling through the process because now, you know, this line is no longer valid, so I need a soil engineer. So I went down to Fairfield and spoke to the engineers down there, they were to come out. But that's when I got William Kenny Associates, because they proposed to come out and do soil engineering for me. But when they came out and looked at it, here's why I wanted the opening, explain to James, there was, that whole section over there was briars. My neighbor actually went in, he asked me like 10, 15 years ago, his kids were very young, he went in with a backhoe and pulled them all up along the property line. They're nasty stuff. Didn't pull them out along the road. They're, they look like one to two inch water pipes, they're so thick. It was just, it was like three, four trees, but it was all briars and you couldn't get through it. So the plan was, I'll create an access for you guys, then you go and do your association. So that's why we did the access first. Phase two is going to be the soil engineer, phase three would be presented to wetlands. Can I go, can I cross that 20-foot area that dips a little bit to get up to the higher ends level of all the property and store? And that's, that was, it was like three phases. Get the road open, get the next step.
What's the next phase happen?
When I get cleared that I didn't do anything wrong and I'm not under violation.
Wow.
I'm not going to progress with something that right now violates the wetlands.
Oh, I mean, I think that you, I mean, if you come in with a plan.
I did.
Show something.
I did.
Well, without a wetland soil scientist saying what the barrier is, we can't say anything. But if you come in with a plan and you want to get there and that's the best place to do it, then, then it's highly likely, I think, that we would say, okay.
But before I do the next step, I want to clear this violation. I just cleared another violation I had with him, I've got this violation. I'm not going to spend money if, or right now, just the old road openings in violation. So I have a project that's already in violation, why go to the next step and spend money?
So. The way it stands right now, I mean, there, there is fill that has been brought into what I would say is probably wetlands. So that is the violation, then it's a matter of what the commission wants to do with that.
However, there's obviously a very long time stamp from when the complaint and the site visit came in to note the violation in April to when we actually issued.
Did you do this?
April.
Oh, okay.
So when we actually issued the violation in September, because we were giving him plenty of time to do the soil scientist and come in with a potential plan so that he didn't have to spend the money removing everything if this commission was willing to entertain, you know, giving him access, moving the garage, doing things like that. So with good faith nature, we didn't automatically go to a violation, we were, we were trying to work with the owner.
As I explained to Andrew on my property the day he came to inspect me for another violation, I'll cross it on the other side of it, right? For my day, I got a neighbor who really just likes to complain a lot.
I mean, but the net result is, we're currently in a violation.
Correct.
You don't want to do anything beyond getting this resolved.
Right now, yeah.
So you need a plan to get it resolved. So what do we got to do to get it resolved? If he doesn't want to put together a plan for the, whatever number of phases he wants to do, let's ignore that and say, all right, we'll solve this.
The way to clear the violation is to remove that material from where it is.
Okay.
Stabilize it.
Then that's the plan.
That's.
Or to the right of way.
To.
To the right of way.
Anything within the right of way is permitted.
Right.
It's good. The only violation is at the property line to the interior of the property.
So it sounds like you have a choice of pulling that out or putting together a plan.
We're mediating the road access, right? We're talking, we're talking, this violation's cleared, right?
Yes, that violation is clear. Yep, we're only talking about that.
How much gravel do you want me to pull back?
All the way back to where the property line is.
The stone wall. So it'd be.
Stone wall.
Stone wall doesn't exist in that corner, so I want to.
Uh, no, it does.
It does coming this way. But when he went in with the backhoe or removed all that stuff, I think he took out part of that stone wall.
Okay, well, where that stone wall stops, you can draw a perpendicular line to the Okay. Well, where that stone wall stops, so it can draw a, a perpendicular line to the street.
Third law of regulations, people really shouldn't be removing.
The center of the stone wall.
Okay. Thank you.
The center of the stone wall perpendicular to, or parallel to the, the.
Parallel to the street. Yeah.
But if you really, if you're really proposing in the future to, to put it, put something in, you should just get.
Do you under- do you understand that what I'm saying? If you understand that's what I'm doing and I've gone over because the contractor who pushed the gravel where he thought was the right place on that side.
You have a third.
And, and the head, and the head of your wetlands.
You have a third.
You have me to disadvantage. You had the opportunity while I had equipment, excuse me. You had the opportunity while I had the equipment there paid for to remove the gravel and not tell me. Now I got to pay $300 to get the equipment there and then pay to remove the gravel. So I find it unfair that you put a burden of expense on me when you could have told me when you inspected. That's all I'm saying. I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you. You want me to remediate the violation. I will. I'm just letting you know that you put this on me in a bad way.
Cliff, Cliff, if I may, I, I just want to point out one thing. When, when we were talking about this, and you're talking about how we're putting, you know, this burden on you, the, what you, what you were presenting was that, you know, you wanted to put this driveway in and then you wanted to get the soil scientist out there to then move forward.
Right.
We're, we're basically, and that's all that we've wanted from you, e- even at this point. And, and that's what the commissioner is mentioning is that, you know, the way even he sees it is you have one of two options. One, you can come in, pull out the material right now. Then stop, recoup, get the soil scientist out there. Or you get the soil scientist out there to delineate everything and come in with the plan. Then, then that's when the commission will make the determination on if that, that material needs to be removed at all.
Understood.
So, so, so he's trying, the, my consensus so far is that the commission is trying to give you options. Not, not just shoehorn you into, and back you into a corner for one option. So ju- just, just to be clear.
My contractor came to you folks and filed my plan that you and I walked over with Thomas and he got a permit to go 30 feet in. And he followed the permit and followed my instructions. He followed the permit signed off by the town. And he went 26 feet on it, not 30, and 31, just a little 31 on the other corner. Because that's just the way aesthetically created, nothing that would fall in. So my point is this, he followed the permit he gave. He didn't follow what I told. All right. So now.
The permit is only good within the right of way.
Well, I don't see that here. But the point is this.
A, a, a highway modification permit is only valid for the modification within the highway.
All right. I'm a layman. And again, my point is this, you were outside with Thomas. You saw a violation. I told you, did I not say, am I okay? What did you answer me?
From the DPW standpoint, you are okay with the.
Confusing is he didn't say, he did not say, oh, Thomas found a violation. He said, you're good. If he said Thomas found a violation, what do you mean? He said, what's the violation?
And, and, and did, and did I not tell you to stop what you were doing?
They did.
And, and I know, but did I not tell you that? I said, stop what you're doing because there's been a complaint. So stop, don't pave and you got to come and talk to the wetlands commission right then and there. That's what I told you.
But I did, I did stop.
You did stop. Yes. But I indicated to you that there was a problem.
You, you didn't say.
By telling you not to pave, you have to pave.
You said, please don't pave that till you meet with wetlands.
Correct. And this is the first time you're meeting with them.
Sorry. I'm not an English major. That's not, we found a problem. Neither remediate.
So again, we're giving you a.
I'm going to remediate.
So.
I'm going to remediate.
Okay. But that is obviously your choice. We're giving you an option to not remediate, come up with.
No, I'm not remediating. There's going to be a lot of stink from this too after remediation. You had the opportunity to, well, again, it's money. It's money. I got to bring a piece of.
You're giving an option to not spend money right now.
No, I got to spend $900 for an engineer. What if he says it's wetlands? You say now you got to pull it back. I'm going, I'm going to find out the hard way. I got to pull it back.
But you're, you're still going to.
Still going to have to hire an equipment to come in and remediate if the engineer for the soil sampling says you can't go through there.
The engineer is not going to say that. We would say that.
Right.
Okay. I understand. And I'm not trusting.
Honestly, you're, you're asking for.
Would this, would just, listen, I'm sorry, but what just happened with this, I'm not trusting it. You're going to say, okay?
But the thing is, is that if it's something you want to do.
You're asking for our consideration and understanding.
Your issue. You have a permit that says 30 feet. I completely understand that. And, and, and you almost have a third option. You could come in for a permit to what you just did and nothing else.
So I asked, I asked to prove it to get approval for what I covered accidentally.
Well.
What you're asking for is for our consideration and understanding, considering everything that happened, right? And that totally makes sense, but we need more information. That's my understanding of this. And the soil scientist would provide that. So you, you're asking us as a commission to make a blind judgment without any, any information relevant.
No, just in the fact I had a, I had a wetlands director out there who didn't tell me to remediate.
First off, I, I would be remiss if I didn't stick up for my own staff. Thomas would not characterize the timeline of what happened in the same way that it was presented tonight. What I did, push him on what was discussed during those meetings. He referred to me to two emails, which are in your packet. One is from Thursday, May 2nd, and the other one is from May 6th, where in the owner's own words, he said, the request was to create the access point to the stone wall.
That's correct.
Um, and again, a proper plan and permits were filed that the street opening permit was performed only from the street to the stone wall. And Thomas goes, yes, the conversation was always from the street to the stone wall, which is all within the public right of way. It wasn't until they went out to look at it that they saw that it went past. And per his complaint notes and his follow-up at that time, he says that he requested the applicant to go to the inland wetland commission meeting.
Thomas told Shane to pull back that gravel. That wasn't there when they were outside. Why didn't you say to Shane, pull back the gravel? You went over the wall.
Be- because pulling back the gravel is not your only option. And that's what the commission and we've all been pushing you towards is that's not your only option. You ha- you have multiple options. You have three separate options that the commission has laid out. And, and only one of them is pull it out.
I understand. Okay. Thank you.
So if your plan is still to remediate, can you talk about what does that mean to you? I don't want him to blindly start doing stuff again.
I got to call my contractor, see how soon he can get his equipment there, what it's going to cost me. And if he understands what he did, why ask to pull it back off the top of the wall?
Um, all, all the material from the stone wall out into the property would need to be removed back down to the existing grade of what it was before.
Something like strange, which shouldn't be hard.
I, I haven't put a laser level to it, but I'm going to say it's probably when you get up to that stone wall.
Left side maybe because the wall is there.
That might be.
On the right side.
That might be three feet of material. I don't know. I don't know.
Stone wall isn't three feet high.
I don't know. I'm not putting a laser level to it. Just eyeballing it. I'm going to say it's 30 inches.
I'll repeat what I said. I have to get my contractor on the phone.
Yep.
Find out when he can get his equipment there and how much it's going to cost you to pull back.
The material comes out of there, the bare soil is going to need to be seeded with a conservation seed mix.
Okay.
You're not requesting any more additional plantings. You're okay with just a seed mix? I'm okay with that.
I'm okay with just a seed mix. Yes. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right. So you're going to get your information and then you two are going to touch face.
Yep.
Can I, what?
I'll give you a date of when I can get ahold of my contractor. Right now I'm in the middle of a brick walk that washed out. They're fixing that, the roof that's coming off next week. So this is going to be third. I'm sorry.
What is the next step in your, after you've pulled the gravel back, you've pulled the materials back, are you going to go forward with the soil scientist or are you not going to?
I'm not sure now. Very fearful.
I mean. The commission's, the commission's.
25 years I've been in here three times. That's all I got to tell you.
The commission's giving you the option of leaving it the way it is, leaving it in violation to go to the next step. If you really wanted to go to the next step, you could just.
I do, because in my opinion, that delineation flag I have, I, I will argue until my last breath that that's the flagline of the wetlands. You tell me changed in 25 years on a dry street.
That's one, that's one side of it. We're asking you to.
Right. No, no, I understand. But I could, again, you're not looking at it from my perspective. I come in here, I give you the engineer's report and you say, you know what? We don't want you crossing that 10 feet to get the high ground.
Yeah, but the, in, in how, I don't know how many years I've been. Way too many I've been here. And we have, we have denied maybe two or three requests in, 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 I don't know how many years. Everyone else, we've worked out a way to, to get people what they want. So I, I wouldn't be fearful if it's, if, if you're put that driveway in the best location to get to dry land, generally we were pretty reasonable and, and get people what they want. So if you'd rather clear it up and then come back later, that's your choice.
I'll, I'll do this. I'll call my soil engineer. I'll get a new date and I'll send that date to, uh, you or Kathleen.
Me, me.
Send it to him. I'll send him the new date and I'll get Mark's team out there. I, I, I'm, I'm a good listener. I'm going to go ahead and.
You know, I mean, if it's wetlands for 500 feet and you got to go plow through that.
I got a, no, no, it's, it's literally like 15 feet. It's like, it's just a swell.
15 more feet than where you are right now.
It's a natural swell from where the water before, right when, before the road, the pipeline, it's, you can tell where natural runoff used to be. It's all briars now. So yeah, so what I'll do is I'll, I'll get a new plan. I'll call my soil engineer. I have a bar, but I've got ears too. And I'll, uh, I'll submit a date to you.
I was going to say, give me some sort of timeline. Yep. Give me some sort of timeline.
Maybe I'll get a Christmas discount from them waiting this long.
All right.
Cool. Sound good?
Yep.
Sounds good to us.
Like a fire.
We're trying to work with you.
Yeah.
Trying to work with you. Yeah. I'm, I'm not.
Everybody gets a little punchy. Everybody gets a little punchy at midnight.
That was supposed to just be bricks being reset and they.
Need any more motions?
I need a roof that's been naked for four years. It's that long.
All right. Um.
Gentlemen, thank you so much. Everything. James, thank you so much for hanging in there.
We don't need emotions to adjourn.
Backseat, backseat staff has told me they would, they would appreciate motions.
I know. I read, I went and read these to my staff. They said, no, we want motions.
Oh, really?
I said, I was told we don't need motions.
We got a motion.
Motion.
You can do Christie too. Christie was like, if you ask an emotion, I'm like, which one?
We got a motion to.
We can't hear anything else.
We can't motion to hear minutes?
We can't hear anything else.
We got a motion.
All right. We'll do it on the next one.
Can't do anything.
Yep. We'll do it on the next one.
Have a motion adjourned.
Are we allowed to do that or we just have?
No adjourn.
We should do adjourn.
Second. Stain.
We're adjourned. By far, the longer.
11:49 invalid.